Hello, everybody. Welcome to Concord Planning Board Meeting of September 27, 2022. We'll start off with doing a quick roll call of the planning board members that are here. I'll go with who I can see first in order. Mark Giddings.
Here.
Haley Oradall.
Here.
Linda Miller.
Here.
And myself, Nathan Boss, that I'm here. I do not see Sue Felshen yet, though I do believe she'll be joining. And we know that Andrew Boardman is unable to join tonight. All right, we have, I've said this before, I have a second screen. So sometimes if I look like I'm looking over here, it's because I'm looking at what I have over here. So for today's meeting, let's jump right into our seven o'clock order of business. Elizabeth, you look like you're about to say something.
Oh, no, I was gonna. For your seven o'clock item for 48 Y, Pittsburgh Turnpike Planned Residential Development, the board has a revised planner's report. There is one typo that I can, as the board goes through it, I can show you that Haley pointed out. Doesn't materially change anything, but I do know that some questions were raised from the previous meeting, a board member had asked a couple of questions that I sent on to the applicant. So I believe Mr. Clausen, Mr. Henchy and Mr. Leider are have a couple of items. They would just like to information they'd like to present to the board. And then if the board wishes, they can go through the revised report and move forward from there.
Well, that's an excellent introduction. And since we're pressed for time, we'll just move right on with that. So Chris, I assume you'll kick things off.
Yes, sir. Thank you for having us. My name is Chris Clausen. I'm with Quarry North Road LLC. We're the applicant for this PRD. And tonight I have Matt Leidner, who is our civil engineer with us and Bill Henchy. And he's our attorney. And thank you for having us. I'm in Naples, Florida. And I have a big old storm right over my head right now and lots of tornadoes. And it's kind of dicey, but I'll get right to it. They forwarded to me some questions that one of the board members had raised. I'd like to take them one at a time. Let's see, there was a question, the first question had to do with landscaping plans and the areas shown on the landscape plans that look as if they're bare. And they are bare because it was a mine. So the question that I understand was how are we going to deal with erosion? And what we're going to do is we have some extensive grading that has to take place in that area. When that's done, we are going to replant according to the landscape plan and hydrose. And in conjunction with that, there will also be a SWIP plan for that is submitted to natural resources that deals with erosion control. So we are going through some, one more revision with natural resources right now with our landscape plan. It's minor that actually there are improvements. We're adding more plant material per natural resources in the buffer zone. So that, that, that'll be decided. I reviewed, I think, the week after next with the natural resources board. Next question had to do with the home orientation. We have the all the driveways on the west side of the single family homes. And the question that was raised, can we flip the homes so the driveways could be above each other rather than on the opposite sides? And we explored that. And there's a, this is more of a technical question from our civil engineer. But how I understand it is our grade starts from the west at the high point. And then it goes, the grade slope travels down as you go east. And when Matt is laying out the homes and the foundations and the foundation drains and driveways, it's, it works better to have the drives on the upside of the home. And Matt, did I explain that correctly?
Yeah, I mean, so, yes, so basically, there's this site, there's about a 20-foot grade change from the west end of the road to the east end of the road. And so the, when laying out a house, like Chris said, the driveways want to be on the high side of the house, the high side of the road. And that's what we did. The reason being is that the driveway has to come into the garage and the garage is tied to the first floor. It's about a foot or so below the first floor elevation typically. So the grade needs to be high there to accommodate the garage. But we can then grade down along the foundation and expose some foundation on the low side to help that grade transition to the next home down, which is lower. So if we have the garage on the, the low side of the road, the driveway would have to be steeper to get up to the garage, which is less desirable. But then the grade differential between that driveway and then the next home down would be, it would be more of a grade to make up if we did that. So just for, you know, for, for grading purposes, it doesn't typically make sense to do something like that. So it wouldn't, it wouldn't be as good of a plan grade wise if we did that.
And we just add to that, we did review this with Elizabeth, maybe a month or so ago, or maybe it was longer than that Elizabeth. And she, she was pushing that same question. And we did explore it. And that's, that's the engineering behind it. So the next question had to do with the mapping of the Sudbury project, which identified a trail connection that is over by the Pulte townhouses. And I can, I can tell you that there is a trailhead connection and it's on the Sudbury Conservation website. Actually, I can pull up the trail map. I can share it with you real quick. So can you see my screen now?
Yes.
Okay, so this is off of the Sudbury Conservation website. And this is called their Frost Farm Conservation Land, where they show a trail network within this. This is all within the town of Sudbury. This is North Road in Sudbury or Pittsburgh Pike Turnpike in Concord. And can you see my cursor?
Yes.
Okay, good.
You're looking at my screen.
I'm looking at your screen. Oh, okay. Okay. Thank you, Elizabeth. Well, if you see where Elizabeth put your cursor on where it says town owned land up on the right side. So that area there is land that we bought from the town of Sudbury. And that's where Pulte is building age restricted townhouses. And that dotted line is a trailhead access point right there. It enters from Sudbury, goes into Concord a little bit, then it comes back into the Frost Farm community, winds around into some other conservation land. And then it, there's a connection points into the future rail trail. There, there are some trailheads that go to White Pond. And we, that's out of our control. We've talked to, we know that White Pond does not want anyone going to, anyone from anywhere going to, to White Pond. And we've let our, our homeowners know that. But the point is that that trailhead can lead over to the rail trail. And that was a big point for the town of Sudbury, wanting to have our residents have access through to the rail trail for hiking. So beyond that, we are not, there is a sidewalk, sidewalk network within the Sudbury Coldbrook Crossing that residents and tenants can use. But we are not building any trails. In fact, the conservation land or the open space that we'll put into a conservation restriction. It's my understanding that net natural resources will most likely have us post that as no access, no hiking. They don't have, want anybody to go into that area. Next question had to come up with some questions about how we're dealing with dogs and trail access. And again, we are not putting any trails into the CR land at all. We have that network of sidewalks within the Sudbury project. And, and within the affordable housing apartments that we're building, we've actually built a dog park and a dog or a pet spa, where you know, dogs can be groomed and washed and things like that. So the, the, from a canine standpoint, there's plenty of things for the people that own dogs to do and within the Sudbury. Okay, the last question had to do with the, what will the Concord houses look like if you're standing in Sudbury? And there was a question as if, are the Concord houses going to be at a higher elevation than the homes that are being built within Sudbury? And, and if, and Matt Leider can really speak to this, but it, again, it's similar to the, what we're talking about earlier about the grading. Grading in Sudbury starts on the west side at the high point. And then it travels down to the low point on the east side, similar to what is happening with the PRD property, high on the west side, low on the east side. And the grades Matt has designed into his, his land plan are basically mirror each other in Sudbury and Concord. So I think if you look at the spot elevations that are called out on his plans, they're within a foot of each other as they travel from west to east. And so the Concord homes are not going to tower over the Sudbury homes or vice versa. And Matt, again, if you could confirm that I explained that properly, that would be helpful.
You did confirm. Yes, they're, they're at about the same elevation as you go along any point on the road. Correct.
Very good. So those were the, the five questions that Elizabeth passed on to me today. And I hope that I address them. If you have any questions, I would be, just let me know. And I'll see if I get you answered.
And Chris, if you don't, if you don't mind, I sent in an email to Elizabeth with the actual elevations of all of those foundations.
Right.
And almost uniformly, the Sudbury top of foundation numbers are about a foot or a foot and a half higher than the Concord number. So the Concord site is actually designed to be slightly lower than the Sudbury side of it.
Very good. Thanks, Bill.
Thank you. All right. So do we want to go through the revised planners report then?
Looks like Linda had a question.
Oh, sorry. I didn't see that, Linda. Go ahead.
I guess my question is, when you did the cross section that we're looking at, is the, there, there's a forested area that I, I thought was to, you know, sort of shield the view of the homes from anyone walking in Concord open land. But now you're saying that actually those, there is no forested area.
No, ma'am. That's, those trees that were shown on the cross section are, are beyond our limit of work and they will not be touched. So those, those trees will be, will remain and they will serve as a wall. I mean, they're large, large trees. We had natural resources actually do a site visit last week to inspect that. And so those trees are there. It's, it's the inside, the limit of work where basically the mining operation had taken place. There's no trees left from, because the mining was took place. And that's the area that looks bare on that cross section. And that, and that area will be replanted with new trees and grasses.
Linda, are you talking about the, the cross section view that shows the height of the trees and the homes?
Yes.
So that forested line is to the north of the property site in Concord, not in Sudbury.
Correct.
Right, but they, the air. So the air, there's an area that will be reforested where you're planting many trees. And then the area towards the houses and towards Sudbury, there's another scope of what looks to be rather steep land. But that, that's the land that's was part of the mining operation and there's nothing on that. That's what.
Okay, so this is why I'm going to show. So.
So hang on, hang on one second. I don't know why that keeps coming up.
Okay.
I think you could see it on that.
Was that the landscape plan, Elizabeth?
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
So is that what's coming up?
Yep. Now, I think.
Okay, so you're talking about this area over here, Linda?
No, no, on the other side.
So this side.
Right.
So that's all existing forested land, all of, all of this right here, this steep part? Yes, that's all woods.
That's all woods. Okay. And, and can that, can that be labeled as such? So because I don't see anywhere that it says it's wooded or forested or.
I believe that land is all going into the conservation restriction. And it'll be, there'll be a legal description that defines that. And then.
Okay, fine, fine.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from board members? I also want to point out that Sue Felshen was able to join. So I assume. Are there any other questions? Mark, it's like you have a question.
So we don't have a report from natural resources yet, correct?
So the natural resources is required to provide their recommendation to the zoning board of appeals. I am working with the natural resources director to at least provide an update to the board on where they are at in that process. They will be going to the commission on October 12th. But my conversations with the natural resources director is that, you know, they, there are some additional revisions that need to be made to the landscape plan. And, you know, as far as the additional notes, some identification of different trees. But there are no significant outstanding issues or significant revisions required for the plans. So she will be putting together a, a letter outlining that and outlining her initial recommendations for conditions beyond what is already in the draft planner's report.
So we don't really have to wait for their final review before we make a decision on this, Elizabeth?
You do not, because you're only making a recommendation to the board of appeals.
Okay.
Elizabeth, did the NRC then indicate that they were going to be okay with work inside the 100-foot buffer on that two-family?
Yes.
They didn't? Okay.
Yeah. Which you're, you, you are allowed to, you are allowed to do work within 100-foot buffer. You're allowed to have structures up to the 50-foot buffer zone. And then there's the 25-foot no disturb zone, which that is being maintained along with the 50-foot.
Yeah, no, I think I understand it's allowed. I've, I've talked with Gary a couple of times about it. I thought there was, they were trying to set a precedent of any new construction that, that wasn't, you know, it's discretionary is my understanding. I know I'm getting hammered on that in another town in Massachusetts myself.
No, it is, it is discretionary for the, the commission to, to look at a project and the overall benefits of a project as it relates to the 100-foot buffer and the benefits to a site. And that is something that they weigh with every project, especially a pre-existing significantly disturbed site.
Yeah, that I understand. Since this was new construction, I just kind of gotten the impression, but I haven't talked to Gary in a few weeks, that they were up in the air about that. But okay, understood.
All right. Are there any other questions from the board? All right. Do you want to, do you want to go through the revised planner's report then?
I mean, I, I wanted to look at one thing as a group, but we can do it when we get there in the planner's report. If that's the way to do it.
Sure. Oh, Elizabeth, are you, we can't hear you if you're talking.
Sorry. I said, I just have to find it. I had too many things open. Just a second. Okay.
I think it's page three.
So what the board has done for other PRD applications is come back to 10-1 and the purpose after they go through the other sections in, required in the, in the bylaw, at this point, the project. This was one of the revisions that the applicant made that was discussed at the last meeting. Had to deal with the duplex and having one of the duplexes be a three-bedroom with a loft area on the second floor with the, where the bedrooms are. And then provided information on the sales price. And I'll, Chris, you know, jump in if I, if I misrepresent something. But the sales price was established based on, in the Sudbury side of the project, the duplexes that are being built and sold on that side. And reflecting, you know, this duplex for this project. And then the single family homes will be, you know, market rate based on a buyer and the level of upgrades and finish that each of those units have.
That's correct.
Typically for Concord, that can go anywhere from a million to, to 3.3 million. Or there's, there's projects in, in Concord where people are doing $4 million renovations to a $3 million house. So and then the section just reflects that change. The square footage of the one duplex unit doesn't change, but it will become a three-bedroom.
So can I add one question to that, Elizabeth?
Yeah.
If we, on the duplex, say we wanted to make the, the unit number one, the four-bedroom and unit number two, the three-bedroom, do we have the ability to do that with the building commissioner?
Yes.
Okay.
That would be, that would be considered a change that's in substantial conformance with the project.
Very good. Thank you.
Since they're just mirrored units.
Right.
And then the applicant provided additional information regarding the height of the structures and questions that were raised regarding the visibility of the structures and the cross-sections for the homes. And this information reflects that information presented in those cross-sectional plans. This is the typo that Haley pointed out in 2021, I think it was 2020. The planning board increased the area of the common required common open space from 25 to 35%. Still retaining at least 50% having to be upland. So the, you know, well, this correction, as far as the, this section is being made, it doesn't change any of the information provided on the project. This is just a note that as Mr. Clausen stated, you know, the commission is still looking at the plan and may have further restrictions to be placed on the conservation restricted area. But I do know their initial conversations is they that that area will be in a permanent conservation restriction. The applicant provided additional information regarding the actual area, the PRD that's to be restored through, you know, grading, revegetation, landscaping and seeding. The information in item C reflects the revised landscape plan and, because there was a question regarding the number of trees. Item E just is references that the commission has indicated that they do not wish there to be any public trails in that conservation restricted land, given it's the steepness and the, how it comes down into that large wetland basin and the potential for erosion and sedimentation if trails are to be built and especially maintained if they're being used. Sorry, I think I'm losing my voice too. So if I'm not speaking loud enough, please tell me.
I see Linda's got a question, I see.
Yeah, I just, I, I understand that I'm not sure that, now that I look at it, the wording of natural resources has indicated they do not wish. That seems to me somewhat weak. I mean, there are a lot of things I do not wish, but I don't that, that, so can we say that they will, they're recommending prohibiting or, or something a bit more substantive than wish?
So what I am envisioning is for tonight is have the board go through, you know, discuss the sections where they're required to make recommendation to the zoning board of appeals. I will update, I will take this report and turn it into the board's recommendation letter as a draft for you to review at your October 11th meeting. And what I am envisioning is that after speaking with the natural resources director, you know, over the, you know, over the next few days, updating these statements to accurately reflect what is happening with the natural resources commission. So more than likely, it will say, you know, that the, as you indicated, the commission will recommend that there be no public trails within the area. But I'll work with Delia on making sure that that language accurately reflects what they're doing.
And Elizabeth, Elizabeth, for whatever it's worth, the discussion over there has been such. My expectation is that any order of conditions is probably going to prohibit that.
And G just talks about the height of the structures again, as far as the scenic views. And then to Linda's point, I'll make sure I accurately reflect what the commission is doing after speaking with Delia. The engineering division did review all of the revised plans and did not have any issues and concerns with the grading drainage, the stormwater drainage. And is recommending, you know, standard conditions regarding those items. They did make one point that they're making to the board of appeals regarding the tractor trailer making the turn and having to cross over. Which, you know, it's, it's a private road. It's in a PRD. And the board has often balanced the extent of pavement and the width of the roads, especially if you're talking about only six homes. So I, I left, I left this in there because the, the engineering division pointed out, but. So I, I left, I left this in there because the, the engineering division pointed out, but from a PRD standpoint, and even certain public roads in town. Because of the low volume, I don't believe this will be an issue for the board of appeals. And whether the planning board wishes to weigh in on this or not, you know, that's something the board can discuss. There was additional conversations about the solar and EV charging stations. And the applicant will be providing, after I've provided him information on the number of EV vehicles in Concord. And that it is probably a great marketing position, so there will be one charging station in each of the garages. And then I did also speak with Pamela Katie, she's with CMLP and works with their renewable energy. And regarding the area of roof area for southern exposure and you know, typically that root amount of roof area would be sufficient. She provided additional information regarding just the solar panels and the cost effectiveness, if somebody is not a high energy user, it's likely they would not find solar panels cost effective based against Concord CMLP's rates. But that, this level of roof area and the fact that there are no significant trees close to any of the homes, that that would be sufficient. Again, just talking about information on the landscaping and the EV charging station. And then this is the additional information provided by the applicant regarding the groundwater and issues and concerns that were raised with the septic systems and the public health director did provide a comment letter that the project does meet the not only title five, but the Concord Board of Health's more restrictive local regulation. Again, additional information on, from the landscaping plan. Additional information regarding CMLP and the completion of their review. The applicant did provide engineering information regarding the generation of traffic going one seventeen towards Concord. This was a, a comment of mine, which I reflected, the landscape plan and the civil plan. Do not show a sidewalk connection. And from the Sudbury development and into this project looping around. And that's something that I'm recommending. Be a condition of approval should the board move forward to recommend approval. And then we get, then we get into the site plan review criteria. Most of everything in this section is duplicate from the required sections under the PRD, except for the applicant did provide cut sheets for the exterior lighting showing that they're dark sky compliant. The fire department is recommending that the units have sprinklers and central monitoring station. Then it gets into the recommended conditions. So for the planning board for for your requirements for recommendation to the board of appeals starts with ten four two one. Actually, ten four two two. Down to ten four two five. So these are the sections that the board needs to discuss and come up with whether they feel the project meets those requirements.
Thank you, Elizabeth. You said ten four two, two or two one, I'm sorry, I missed which.
So ten, well, so it's all under ten four two?
Yeah.
Ten four two one is just a
general description of the PRD and the surrounding. So unless there's something more specific you want to add, that's just a general description.
So the actual.
The actual PRD components.
The actual sections for the planning
board to discuss and make a recommendation start with ten four two two.
Yeah. Yeah, so I think we should just guess go down the line, starting with, I don't think there would be anything to change or, or discuss regarding ten four two one. I can't see everybody at the same time, so I can't tell if if you're on the board and you do have a comment or question, just interrupt me. Otherwise, I'll just go down the line because I, I can't, I don't have you guys all up on my screen at the same time at the moment. All right, so if there's nothing to change for ten four two one, ten four two two. I think we went over the grading. This isn't, well, this includes the pedestrian part. I, I will ask a question because, thank you, Elizabeth, for bringing it up. What, what was the original reason that the sidewalks were not connected between this PRD and the existing Sudbury? You know, the other part of this, really.
So I can answer that question. The, there's a MIPA threshold of impervious area. And when MIPA looks at our Concord PRD, they, they'll include the Concord PRD with the whole Sudbury property. So they can't consider them two separate projects from MIPA's standpoint.
Yeah.
Well, we're right up against the threshold of impervious, which if we go over it, then we have to do an EIR. So we, we we narrowed everything down as we could and we're, we're under the threshold. And that's why we, we did not want to put a sidewalk in.
So you're saying that installing it at this point would push you over the threshold or you are just under the threshold, should you add it?
It, it'll push us over the threshold. So I, I asked Elizabeth if we could do a, like a stone dust sidewalk, which would be porous and not put it, not be considered impervious. And I guess that is acceptable. It's, it's more maintenance on ours, from our standpoint. Because if we, when we plow that, we're gonna have to fix it up every, every spring. And then there's, we, we also can look at potentially changing some of the driveways from a standard asphalt to a brick paver, porous brick paver type of a thing. That's just an additional cost, but it might be better for us to do that. If you can give us the flexibility of either doing that and then we could put a regular asphalt sidewalk in. Or if it doesn't work, then we'll put the stone dust sidewalk in and then we'll just have a maintenance expense every year. So, but I, I need to stay underneath that MIPA threshold. That's a, that's a big one.
So, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, the, the amount of impervious surface on this part of the project is, you know, is actually pretty modest, but because the whole thing is in common ownership, people would consider it segmentation if we attempted to cut them apart and we've had discussions with them on that, so. They're, they're requiring us to stay within all the thresholds for the entire projects, plural. Otherwise, additional filings will be required. So that's, that's why Chris gave you the answer he did.
So if you could give us some flexibility, either a stone dust or if we can find a way to put some porous pavers in some of the driveway area, uh, we'll do that. And it's just so we can stay underneath the MIPA threshold.
Yeah.
And I would imagine, Elizabeth, the building commissioner could give us that flexibility.
Uh, so should the, so my comment as far as the porous pavers on the driveways is five out of the six driveways each have a little back out turnout in them, but, and that could easily accommodate porous pavers instead of asphalt. So that was one method to reduce this, you know, the total impervious coverage. But from a standpoint for whether the sidewalk in, in this private development is asphalt or gravel. I don't, I don't have an issue with that. It's a, you know, so long as it still meets ADA requirements. You know, there's, there's gravel sidewalks in Concord and it just be, it's a trade off on the maintenance issue. But the plans wouldn't, prior to any site work, any additional revisions to the plans would be required and they will need to show the sidewalk. It can label it whether it's asphalt or gravel. But the plans will need to be revised before the project moves forward.
Okay.
Or contrariwise, modified to show the porous pavers and driveways are in some other location.
Preference from those on the board on which way to recommend?
Big sidewalk, sidewalks are important. I think, you know, how we go about it is isn't that material to me, okay? But I think they should have sidewalks in this development.
Oh, I, I, I
A hundred percent am recommending that there be a sidewalk on the southern side connecting this project to the rest of the projects.
Right. And a, as Mark said, as a planning board member, I think the town planner's recommendation is a very good idea and we should go with that. Although I also have no particular, well, I think porous pavers and a paved sidewalk would probably be preferable for handicapped people, but I don't want to constrain the applicant on that matter myself.
Yeah, I think, I think that would be my preference as well, as a, as a resident of Congress who lives on a street that was as of this month is no longer a stone dust sidewalk. So the stone dust sidewalks are really not ideal through the winter and the spring, especially if you have any sort of mobility issue. So yeah, the preference would be for, for paved sidewalks. So if you can look in, well, I'm, I'm speaking out of turn. I want to hear from others on the board, but my preference would be if you could do the, you know, the pervious pavers on a portion of the, you know, the upper side of the driveway where the turnouts are. If that can get you where you need to be, I think that's, that's the, that's the trade off there.
And, and I, I can tell you, you know, we're okay with putting the, maintaining the plan to add a sidewalk. As long, if you could just give us the flexibility to figure out if we can make the porous pavers work. I mean, it would be our preference to do an asphalt sidewalk also, but I, I gotta look at costs and square footages of the areas. And if you just give me the flexibility, we'll, we'll put the sidewalk on the plan. Thank you.
Is there anybody else? Haley or Eva or Linda? Any other comments for that portion?
Just, just so I understand, Nathan, what you said is a preference for I'm gonna butcher the terminologies here, but basically like a paved sidewalk for all sorts of reasons.
Yeah.
But what the applicant is asking for is flexibility to maybe not do that. Is that, did I get that right?
He's asking, yeah, he's asking for the flexibility to do either asphalt sidewalk with previous pavers on the driveways or in the case that the, the pavers are cost prohibitive to do a stone dust.
I think he needs, I think he, excuse me, he needs to just do the analysis and then come back to us, okay? And let us know whether, what they can do. And then we'll make it a, an approval based upon that. Well, can I, Mr. Chairman, may I?
Yes, go ahead, Bill.
Um, thank you very much. I, I, I don't want to interrupt any member who wants to speak. I, what, what's going through my mind on the discussion is, I mean, we've got loud and clear, the town planner's recommendation for a sidewalk. Clearly, the board is recommending that direction. What's going through my head is, I, I don't know if, if Chris, if you've got enough room on the driveways, right?
So this is definitely something that's not going to be decided tonight. I will, I will figure out how to word this appropriately, but I think within the next two weeks that Mr. Leidner can probably do a little bit of quick napkin sketch on areas and see where that gets them as far as the impervious, total impervious coverage and whether the sidewalk can be asphalt or gravel.
So Elizabeth anticipated my concern. I think that's
Yeah, that's reasonable to me.
Very good.
So at this point, it's focusing on whether the proposed development, including the design and use of the buildings and the open space, the pedestrian vehicle circulation and the location and capacity of parking, which is definitely not an issue for this project. And whether the provisions of the grading, landscaping and screening.
I mean, otherwise, I think, aside from what we're just talking about for the pedestrian circulation portion, I think we've discussed in one, one portion or another, the other components over those last several meetings, so.
I don't, I don't know if this is where my topic would go or if it would be further below, but I I, I wanted to kind of revisit like the common open space schematic and maybe just to refresh it, at least myself, maybe others too, but but I don't know if that fit is there in that section or if I'm jumping ahead. You tell me if I should wait.
So this is the area that's gonna be within the the conservation restriction?
Maybe I've struggled to keep it straight in my head, like is that an overlapping, you know? Uh, or, or are those mutually exclusive, the common open space versus the conservation restriction area or?
No, no, they're, they're one in the same. It's just, it's, it's just the method on how they are being so there's, there's So is that my, you guys still hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Sort of roboting.
That's because it's working so hard to load, but it'll be okay.
I'm gonna have to go to my husband to get off them.
Stop, stop streaming.
I know, I, I'm gonna go tell him that.
But I think this question, this, this would be part of ten four two four, right? I, I don't.
So give me two seconds, Haley.
Right, right. Like the, basically like the, what, what, what are the up, well, especially the upland portion of the common open space, but, or I guess what you would call like, how, how do we? I wanted to, I guess, just see where other members were at with their view of like the common open space that will be usable to the residences, like all residents especially.
There'll be none.
None. They, Natural Resources doesn't want anyone accessing it.
That's right.
But even the upland, where, where is the upland here?
Yes, it's, it's all conservation.
That the hatched area even within that line.
Uh, yeah.
All used.
So um, the conservation restricted area will be.
All of this hatched area and then an additional area that wraps around this side. Um. The twenty-five foot buffer around the wetland. So that will be all of the of the area that will be in the conservation restriction. That is the common open space.
Okay, and that's, what is that like? The calculation was like forty some percent or was the forty some percent the upland piece?
Um. Is, isn't it fifty-seven percent?
Yeah. Fifty-seven percent is what it said.
I think it's, yeah, fifty-seven percent.
For the upland piece or the, or the total like?
I will tell you exactly. Um, fifty-seven per, fifty percent of the PRD is um the common open space and of that um, a hundred, um, so little less than four hundred thousand square feet is common open space and um little over one hundred and twenty-two thousand square feet of that is the upland. But all of it. But all of it, including upland is part of the conservation restriction. So the common open spaces all to be commonly used only to uh uh provide natural land i- in the world, not for the use of the residents.
Correct.
Correct.
Got it.
Okay.
Ready?
Yeah, I guess um, and that I guess I just struggle with that is like the intent of when I look at like the lot, lot sizes of the single family homes, especially I don't know how many square feet those are on the, on the four, um, but they look big, you know, look like, you know, normal, single family home, non PRD sized lots. Um, correct me if I'm wrong on that one, but just visually looking at that and so I guess it's just a little bit feels very non PRDE of us to like approve something that has the lots laid out as they are with no actually usable common open space, which would result if you were to shrink down the footprint of those lots.
I, I, if I may add to that Haley, um, I, I think the uh natural resources putting that collar on us of no access to the, any of the upland or uh, uh, or wetland areas is, that's a collar that they put on us. We, we didn't offer that. It was.
If I may, I don't think that's what Haley is saying. I think she's saying that the private land per lot is about the same as a normal subdivision style lot and by taking some of the land away from each house and turning it into common open space that would be usable, then there would be more, that would have more of a PRD feel, but I have not actually looked at the lot numbers myself.
So we can, we can add to that. Maybe Matt, you can describe the uh lot sizes and they're not actual lots. These are in a condominium. So uh, they're exclusive use areas, but go.
Okay, correct. Thank you for correcting the terminology.
And uh, and they, and I think the AA zoning requires an eighty thousand square foot lot size if you're gonna do a single family subdivision.
That's what I was going to say. So these lots are about half the size actually of, of what would be a subdivision uh in this part of town, in the zoning district. So these are forty, these are roughly one acre lots. The duplex lots, two acres, so one per unit, one acre per unit, but the single family lots um, or home sites are each an acre. Um, you know, where it's eighty thousand, so almost two acre zoning. So they are smaller lots than would be required.
Yeah, they're just, they're still big lots for as far as the PRT concerned.
But that's sort of AA zoning for us. They're just very big lots.
Elizabeth, you still have your screen showing.
And why did natural resources put those restrictions on?
Well, I, I believe uh they put them on because the topography in that area, uh, at least where you go over the ridge line is very steep and there was a concern about erosion.
Erosion, you said that, yeah.
Right, and safety and things like that. So and then, and, and as you get down to the wetlands, there, uh, I mean, it's a sensitive area. You want to stay away from that. You don't want to encourage from going down. So.
A- anyways, I, I, I don't know Elizabeth, if like um that this is more getting into like final deliberation or like type commentary from me or I just don't want to be speaking out of turn, but I don't know where this belongs. If, if this, if it's with what we were supposed to be going through right now or not.
So, well, I, I mean, it, it does. I mean, the planning board's making a recommendation to the, you know, to the Board of Appeals. Um, I believe I understand you, your um, the point you're trying to make Haley. Um, so what I can do since um it's already almost eight o'clock. Um, I can have a conversation um with um Chris before your October eleventh meeting, um, see if there's um if, I just, I can't think of right, think of it right now. If there's some way to kind of uh address that uh in some manner and um bring it back to the board on the eleventh.
I, I can, I can add to that, Elizabeth. I mean, we've um, I mean, I'll be glad to talk with you and explore other ideas, but we have spent a lot of time on this. Uh, if you remember, we started with a definitive subdivision plan and that, and we came back to you with the PRD per your, per your request. And uh, and we've, we've worked really, really hard on this to uh meet and exceed the PRD uh regulations and, but I, I'll be glad to talk to you about some other ideas. Thank you.
Well, it is a critical to us that we meet that PRD requirement in this particular case, right? You know, that's a question. I don't know.
Okay, um, I mean, we, we technically are. It's just the NRC is recommending that that space be set aside and reserved. And the question I would have is even if they were to re, if, you know, Chris, you guys were to reconfigure with the NRC recommend not to allow for that space to be a, a, a playing field, for example, I'm just throwing that out there. Uh, next to that space. I don't, I don't know. Um, but.
Yeah, if, you know, if I'm in the minority, then that's, that's just the way it is. But yeah, I just wanted to bring up, that's where I'm at. Um, I mean, it kind of ties to the question of like, are the housing types diverse enough? Um, I mean, yes, technically speaking, it meets the eighty percent. You know, no more than eighty percent is basically the same, but you know, these, again, when I look at it, these are, these are ginormous houses that aren't typical in a PRD. Um.
Well, and I have a, a similar concern to Haley's there, but again, I think the problem is in how our PRD regulation is written. To me, having two identical sized duplex units that have a different number of bedrooms doesn't really provide diversity in the number of bedrooms to have a four bedroom sized house that don't, that's just been restricted to three bedrooms, but the way the PRD by law is written, it counts the number of bedrooms. It doesn't say anything about the size. So I, I think in that respect, it meets the, well, we, we do have discretion, but I do think that it meets the letter of the bylaw there.
Oh, yeah, I'm not talking about the duplex. I just like, again, whatever, three thousand square foot homes are usually not in a PRD traditionally.
Yeah, forty-five.
On the other, on the other. I was just saying on the other.
Others that are similar in nature, the uh, um, I'm, I'm drawing a blank on the name of, but the farm uh farm related one that's over on Old Bedford.
Culinary cottages.
Thank you. That was what I was going for. Um, so.
Yeah, and I would have a similar to, you know, response to that one too.
But on the other hand, if you look at the development as a whole, including the Sudbury part, there's a huge mix of
Yeah, but we're not, that's the.
I know, I, I mean, it's sort of like every.
Yeah, I mean, uh, I'm, I'm just gonna, we're talking six homes. Um, it's, it is just, and, and whether it's this project or any other project in Concord, a, a project of six homes is, is, is a, a challenging project as far as trying to meet the diversity that you're talking about. Um, especially on a site that's significantly degraded, that's gonna require substantial uh improvements as far as the grading and the landscaping um of the site. So it's um, I, I completely understand, you know, as far as, you know, the, the board and the PRD, could something like this work at Mill Run or Riverwalk, you know, at, you know, absolutely not, but um, you know, they it, it, it is, it, it is still from a, you know, a conservation the area that's going into the, the conservation restriction. Um. The project does offer a level of protection, especially if you're thinking about the level of development on the Sudbury side and um should the whole entire of site conquered and Sudbury been developed as one project and gone through it the one time? Most definitely. It probably would have looked significantly different, but that's not how um Sudbury played it. So.
Yeah, I wanna, I wanna step back and just say that, that I think, I want to look at some of the positive aspects of this and that. Um, while not necessarily what we have traditionally thought of in the past uh for a PRD, that I think having the, the conservation of the land in this particular scenario is a good trade off to, to the usable open common space that uh, that we've typically talked about in the past. And, you know, we've, we, we have switched to, there's no fossil fuel hookups, so there's not gonna be gas in, in any of those homes. Where they're all gonna be solar ready and we've gotten EV chargers in, in all six garage, well, uh, yeah, all six garages. So I mean, there have been, definitely been some up, up, uh, you know, upward motion things that we've been able to do um that, that we haven't been able to get done in some of the other ones. So I would just add that as well.
Yeah, I, I, I've, I agree. And, and, and I, I think I've struggled with this because it doesn't feel like a PRD, but I think it feels a lot better than a subdivision would, um, which was originally planned. And it certainly, um, I think is a higher value and use of the land for Concord residents as well as Sudbury um versus just leaving it as is in terms of uh, you know, a um unused old um gravel pit. So, so I think that um, in, in, in terms of um, yes, I would like to see more cluster, more community, more open space, more um uh wholeness a- a- about the whole project, but I think that, you know, it, we have our hand, one hand tied behind our back in terms of making this into a PRD. So it's PRD light, but it's, I think, better than certainly any other options that have um, have come up.
Yeah, I want to be mindful of the time and see if we can't just, uh, we've, we've basically talked in, in the past uh twenty minutes about basically everything that's on here. So I just want to run through it real quick and, and sort of check off uh that, that we're, we're either in full agreement or in mostly all in agreement on uh it meeting these these points. Um. Okay, so yeah, we talked about the, we've talked about the open spaces. So I think we, uh, oh, thank you, Elizabeth. I can look over here. Um, yeah, so ten four two three uh. Is the, yeah, the diversity of size and units we've, I, I feel like we've sort of run that, run that one. I think uh, you know, yes, we'd like to see you know, maybe a little bit different, but it does meet uh sort of the requirement as, as stated. Um. And then ten four two four. Okay, yeah, this is going back to uh for public or future use. Again, we've talked about sort of the open spaces, the conservation of the land. I think we're virtually all in agreement on that being acceptable in this case and also taking the recommendation of the NRC for that. Um. In that sense, I also think that does conform to the long range plan in terms of, of, you know, uh withholding lands for natural purposes. Um. Uh, and also goes back to the sustainability. We're talking about solar ready EV chargers in there. Um. And ten four two five. Um. Yeah, so this one uh, I, I think it, it's hard because I, not having looked at the exact plans for the Sudbury portion. Uh, I mean, I've seen what we've, the applicant has shared with us. Uh, you know, obviously these are um uh slightly different, put it that way, than what's on the Sudbury side. Uh, but again, we're, you know, the applicant is led by the agreement with Sudbury with the number of homes that can be placed on, on that uh, on that land. Um, so I, I, I think it would be suitable under those conditions. Um.
I just want to comment momentarily, Nathan, that where you're talking about sustainability, I want to include the uh sidewalk connection to the town as a sustainability measure because it's that in addition to um, uh, an amenity for the residents. Because it allows them to get around without using a motor vehicle if they want. That's all. Just a comment that I think it's sustainability as well.
Okay. Yes, Elizabeth.
Um, this was a comment that was made um a, a previous planning board meeting, um, but um if Chris can correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, these six um property owners will also be able to use um the transportation demand management options for the whole project. And you said there's a shuttle.
Yeah.
System there as well.
In our, in our TDM plan that uh we are, are getting ready to buy a toll passenger van uh as part of that uh TDM plan. And we're also uh joined across uh town connect. Um, so I, everybody's a, uh, gets the benefits of that within, in the community.
And that van will run from, from there to where?
There's a, the van schedule that is in place now runs uh to uh the commuter rail stops in uh Concord and Lincoln uh in uh the morning and the evening. It'll run to uh right, the grocery store, uh, it's gonna run to places of worship uh on the weekends and.
Town offices, Chris, I think it's Sudbury, right?
Uh, um, town, to, to where?
Town offices and down to Route twenty.
I, I don't, I don't think I have that in there, but I think, you know, we can, we gotta gauge what the demand is, Bill, and uh.
Yeah.
Um.
But my point is, is that something that can be put into um this section as well as that these homeowners will be um able to access the same transportation demand management services and shuttle um for the rest of the project. Um, that's part of the project in Sudbury.
Yeah, that, that would be fine by us. That's.
Yeah, I think that's worth that. And do we need to, I mean, I guess we don't need to talk about ten four two six. At this point, we would talk about that. I mean, that's our, that's our recommendation that would come after the final review of, of, of this finalized document.
Uh, correct. So I think I have enough to um finish this section and propose a draft for the board to review at your meeting on the eleventh.
Great. I was okay with the rest of the uh revisions and additions. Um, were there any other uh board members that had any questions or comments about the revisions as they were written? uh board members that had any questions or comments about the revisions as they were written?
I had some minor comments on Worden, but I emailed Elizabeth about it, which should cover it.
Of course.
You're shocked, shocked.
I'm not shocked, I'm always happy that you're doing that.
It's appreciated, trust me.
All right.
You'll grow to hate me.
So then, uh, we will uh continue this to the meeting on ten eleven. All right. You're on mute.
Um Heather, I know we have um the middle school and Concord Academy. So scheduled for seven and seven thirty. Okay, um so um board can schedule this for you can slide it in, it, you know, not that it that would be the time, but you can slide it in before at seven fifteen, or you can slide it afterwards at seven forty-five.
There, the only new information that would we would receive by neck by the next meeting is anything from the NRC, right? There, I mean, there's not gonna be any other changes, so I'm hopeful that
Correct.
So it's supposed to be basically reviewing and uh and you'll have sent this to us before that anyway, so we can review it, and then we're just make our final recommendation.
Well, no, the additional information besides the NRC would be um uh anything we needed to look at about the sidewalk.
That's right.
But we could also just put that in as a, well, we have to decide what condition.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay, um let's do uh under the hopes that it will be a relatively short one, let's put it at the seven fifteen slot.
Okay, terrific. All right, thank you.
Thank you, everybody, Chris, stay safe.
Be safe.
I got alarms going off on my phone.
I thought that might be your phone.
All right, take care, yeah, have a good evening, everyone, thank you very much.
Right.
Bye bye.
And then let's move on to our first uh bit of administrative business, um the Christopher Heights Assisted Living Project Updates. Concord Housing Development will be leading that.
So the Chair of the Concord Housing Development Corporation, Lee Smith, is here to talk to the board.
Excellent, Lee, the floor is yours.
Thank you, good evening, thanks for fitting us into your your crowded agenda. Um, I I'm I'm here tonight to update the the planning board, as well as any members of the public who are here on the status of the Christopher Heights, formerly known as the Junction Village Project, it is an eighty-three unit assisted living project that would be um entirely affordable housing, all counting towards the town subsidized housing inventory. What has happened as this project has evolved is that as the result of the COVID nineteen pandemic, as we've seen across the country, and including in town, um there have been significant economic factors and and cost increases with respect to construction. Um, most of you are probably aware of the significant cost increase just within the past year or so for the for the middle school. So this project is is faced with a similar budget gap to enable the project to go forward. So um as a result of that, the state, the Department of Housing and Community Development has taken all of uh thirty-four projects that have been previously approved for for funding and and rescinded those approvals, and instead said that they wanna see additional financial contributions from each of the host communities where each of those projects will will be built, in- including Concord. Um, so uh that request is coming from the state, it's being delivered by the developer, but nonetheless, it it is, I mean, there is certainly a budget gap, but the developer um was intending to seek additional funds from the state, and like I said, the state is asking for a local contribution, so as a result of that, um we've been working with the Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust, which has uh slightly more than a million dollars on hand already appropriated, so um and we've uh they they have voted unanimously to support the the contribution of a million dollars towards this project. And they have requested of the Select Board, as has um Concord Housing Development Corporation, for support from the Select Board for that additional million dollar contribution. We met or presented to the Select Board on September nineteenth, and no vote was taken, it was met with um certainly to say the least, some some hesitation, and as a result of that meeting, the developer has communicated to me that he's he's not likely to wanna move forward with the project at all. Um, because um not only is as a conscientious developer, but also coincidentally a Concord resident, he he doesn't want to force a project on the community that um in his view is not welcome. So um we haven't given up, we we met with the uh Affordable Housing Trust this morning, and um a meeting with my board tomorrow morning, so we're we're asking to be on the agenda for these uh October third Select Board meeting, uh asking them to take a position on the funding request, and um I believe the Select Board technically doesn't need to approve it, but the Affordable Housing Trust certainly wants their support before um they may uh choose to commit the these additional funds towards this project. The um the risks of this project not going forward are significant to the town in that if you're familiar with um chapter, the chapter forty B laws in the state, if the town does not have at least uh ten percent uh of of housing units uh credited on the subsidized housing inventory, then the town falls out of what they call safe harbor, which is a a protection against um forty B developments that would otherwise be uh much less restricted in in terms of um town uh zoning ordinances, it's bylaws, et cetera, and they have a lot more flexibility in terms of what they can build uh with much less oversight and control on the part of the town, so it's anticipated that once the new census numbers come out sometime next year, that the town will in fact fall below the ten percent. And that will subject uh the town to to that other type of development, which which can create huge impacts upon the town. Um, this project is the only one in the pipeline that has any chance of keeping the town above the ten percent. So it's critically important from from that perspective. And the other piece, which is somewhat of a question at as of today, which which is um the the recently enacted legislation that would have enabled the town to participate in the fossil fuel uh initiative, where I believe the 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 town could restrict or prohibit um new development from using fossil fuels for for energy sources, and it's my understanding that um that the expectation is that a a participating community of which I believe there are only ten in the state would would have to be above the ten percent, it it's an open question as to whether you know, when when the state would look at the town in terms of that number, meaning today we're above ten percent, but next year we may not be. But um I think it's fair to say that um, you know, certainly down the future, without the Christopher Heights project, we'd be well below the ten percent, and and perhaps not, we may not be able to participate in that project, so the the, and this doesn't even speak to the the need for uh affordable housing for the aging community within within town and and other other surrounding communities for um an assisted living project, so that is um as quick a summary as I give you as to where things stand. Um, but again, the, other than to give you the update, uh we're we're CHC is asking for the support of this, the uh planning board, as well as any members of the community, uh when the Select Board hopefully decides to take this question up again, um perhaps next Monday, perhaps after that, we're still waiting to hear on the agenda, but thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you, I appreciate the that that quick overview, but so the two questions I have, and I think the first one was covered in some of the materials, so I just wanna clarify it. So when would these units be credited towards uh, you know, our our uh SHI? As soon as the the second the plan is approved, or like, wh- what stage does it get counted?
As soon as the building permit is issued.
That's right, okay, yeah.
Yeah, and that would, you know, depending on the timing of things, potentially uh twenty twenty-three outside twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
Right, so the way I read it, um there would be an interval in which someone could come in and propose a forty B project, even if Christopher Heights goes forward. On the one hand, they might not, because construction costs have gone up so much. On the other hand, uh we might find ourselves above ten percent due to that project if someone did propose one.
I would agree with that.
Complicated.
It's very complicated. However, you know, a a forty, a uh, a forty B project where the town is below ten percent, it could literally be hundreds of units that may not be desirable to some people in the community.
Uh Linda, I'll come to you in one second, I just wanna say, uh we'll save public comment toward the end after the planning board members have had a chance. So Dawn, I saw your hand up, uh you can raise it in just a few minutes. Go ahead, uh Linda.
Um, I don't wanna repeat a lot of what Leah said, um but I know there's been a lot of support for this in the town, I mean, it, this project has gone before town meeting, there's been uh community preservation funds that have been voted historically in support of the project, um and I think at the same time, there's been support initially when the project came forward to a town meeting from the Select Board and the uh Finance Committee. I think it fits in with our affordable housing goals, it certainly fits in with um town goals in terms of needs of the elderly population in town, which is a significant portion that I think um of our population that's often overlooked. Um, it does satisfy potentially any risks um in terms of forty B um timing or not, it, there are not a lot of other projects that would satisfy um keeping us above that ten percent threshold. And it also offers open space, um if you look at the whole project, there's a big effort taking place in terms of conservation land, um meeting um with the um Trails Group um in West Concord to take additional um to leverage the project as well with additional um parkland and um space a- along the river. Um, and um as well, um you mentioned gives us a boost in terms of the whole fossil fuel initiative, so it seems to me uh uh you know, I don't know that the planning board wants to take a lot of positions on a lot of things, but this really y- you know, is kind of the sweet spot for a lot of things that we stand for and that the town has already supported, so I I honestly don't see that this is much of a stretch to say you know, the uh, yes, we support it and and um move on, so thank, thanks a lot, Lee, for bringing this to us. That's my view.
Thank you, and I agree with everything you said.
Yeah, that was very well stated, Linda, thank you. Um are there any other questions or comments from the board? And then Elizabeth, I have one question for you if there is not.
Well. Oh, go ahead, Haley.
Haley, go ahead.
Um, I think I just missed it when you said it, but uh Lee earlier, he said the developer, you know, doesn't want to push something that they don't feel like is accepted. Is that the impression that he and you've been getting from what, who exactly recently? Because I, yeah, I I agree with everything Linda said, and I think this is a no brainer. Um, it, this sounds like a really unfortunate uh situation, so I I want us to throw our weight behind it. But I'm just curious, like, where that impression is is being received at this point?
It's it's from the developer directly.
You know, from this, is it from the Select Board or bec- or that the developer has been hearing this from other people?
The the developer, as well as uh myself, and our our staff liaison, Liz Russ, were available at at the Select Board meeting on September nineteenth, and um it 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 didn't go well, there there was not uh strong support or any support other than other than from um from from the Select Board, other than from Linda Escobedo, so I think he was really frankly put off by that, and um, you know, at least to date, um doesn't wanna shove a project down the town's throat that, in his view, doesn't want it, and I question whether that's really the will of the town, especially as Linda said, has already been been approved at multiple town meetings, and literally millions of dollars on the table, and um the money being available now without further appropriation. Um, that that's where we are, we're we're at serious risk of losing this project.
Well, I understand people's concern that um Christopher Heights swore up and down that they would never ask for another penny the last time the town voted money at town meeting, but I'm also very sympathetic to the idea that construction costs, I mean, the pandemic is nobody's, well, it's everybody's fault and nobody's fault. It's not, uh, i- i- it's an extraordinary situation, but I did not watch the or attend the Select Board meeting, and I'm not sure if their concern is the promise to not spend more money, or if they're simply questioning whether this is the best use of town money in general.
Well, Sue, I just wanna jump in there, I was hoping, uh, I I see that Linda is is in attendance, if maybe she could give us a quick overview of sort of what the uh what the hesitation was during the prior uh Select Board meeting.
Well, thank you, Nathan, for that.
I don't wanna put you on the hot seat, but you're the one here, so.
Well, and and Mary Hartman, I see, is also in the audience, and was a Select Board member. Um, I I I think Lee captured it when he said the meeting uh just did not go well, um, you know, um there was an opportunity, um I'm gonna try to be as diplomatic as I can be here, um, the there was no opportunity at the beginning of the meeting to give a general update of where we're um which Lee just did. And so people immediately launched into specific questions, and um without the opportunity to have that o- overview, so um it 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 didn't go well, and so then it it ended up with the um one of the Select Board members um suggesting to the town manager that she contact our legal counsel to see where we stood with MOU, but there was never any, and so that's in play right now. Uh, there was never any opportunity to talk about um the fact that the additional funds that the state was asking for at this point, from all the municipalities, from the thirty-four different projects that had originally been approved, um and that there had been the extraordinary escalation of um construction costs with uh COVID, et cetera. Um, there there was never an opportunity to clearly say that um any a- any additional support that would be put up for this project at this time has already been appropriated, we're not going back to the town asking for mu- more money. It it would come from money that's already been appropriated for affordable housing. So um that's the best attempt I can give you in terms of a summary at this point, and as um the the um a an additional discussion is now on the agenda for the Select Board on Monday. And we will come back to this and hopefully um uh have the opportunity for an overview for everyone to hear the same information before any further questions or deliberation go on. But I think at this point, um so much has gone into this project over almost ten years by so many people, uh both paid staff, volunteers, um and 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 many of you in one capacity or another. Um, so at least it deserves serious uh um consideration uh at this point, and I think for me, as a, and all this is now my own comment, this is Lead Board Member, um the fact that, you know, it has been approved by town meeting on two different occasions uh in addition to the CPC um uh recommendation that was approved by town meeting um is significant in terms of what the town has already uh decided for this project prior to the extraordinary COVID and uh situation, so um there's a lot at stake here, and um I I think um in another context today, someone reminded um colleagues in the meeting that we, you know, forty B is important, town character is important, affordable housing is important, but we cannot forget the impact this is going to have on a uh on i- individuals in in our town, and we have heard consistently. the impact this is going to have on a, uh, on individuals in, in our town. And we have heard consistently, I mean, that we have a growing senior, um, population that we also know that we have a significant, um, percentage of people who are struggling with income and are going to need this kind of, uh, supported affordable housing. So the impact on people is, is we, we need to keep that front and center in addition to all these other things we keep talking about. So, um, a- as Lee said, uh, you know, at this point, uh, we haven't given up. Um, and I think we do need support, um, from the town, uh, from the town, from any quarters that we can get it at this point. So, thank you. I hope that helps.
Yeah, I just want one, one second, Lee, before you go. Thank, first of all, thank you, Linda, for, for sharing that. I just want to ask one follow-up and then I want to give Mary a, a chance to also, uh, speak since she is here. When you, when you say that there was, uh, sort of a, a launch into questions and, and sort of pushback, was that, was that particularly from the select board or from the, the members of, of the town, you know, that were present as well?
Well, um, uh, factually, I'll just comment that the chair had to rec, you know, has consistently recused himself on this to, um, topic because he's buttered to the property. And so there was a, um, chair pro tem, um, appointed that night and, um, her decision was to, um, you know, not start with the overview, even though that was suggested as a strategy.
Sorry, I guess my question was, was mostly the feedback you were getting, was it, was it from the members of the select board specifically, or was, was public comment also?
There was, uh, uh, a couple of public comments that, um, either had suggestions for all electric or that kind of thing, which is not feasible at this point for this project. And, and, and another comment, um, that was just, has been consistent about the town coming back to the town for money. But as, um, you know, as, as was stated in the meeting, it was the state coming to the town. Not the developer coming back to the town. I hope that answers your question, but Mary should have an opportunity to.
Yeah, I'm gonna give Mary, if you, uh, you want to take a moment as well.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Okay. I was one of the select board members that was pushing back. And, um, my thinking was that in the past, this has been approved at town meeting. But not by a large majority and also based on the premise that the, the developer would not come back for any more money. So I wonder if we went to the town now and laid it out differently. With the entire cost, if it would still get approved. And I, so that's something that I wonder and I, I really wish we could go back to the town and see how they feel now, given the new cost estimates. Um, we do have a special town meeting coming up. I'm wondering if there's an opportunity, um, to do that. Um, and the other thing that I pushed back on was that there were some, some kind of inconsistencies in some of the mi- numbers that I, I looked at. Um, as far as estimating certain things as far as septic, um, costs. So that troubled me as well. Um, I understand this is not an easy choice and I look forward to uh, talking about it again at the select board meeting. I still do have reservations, but I really wish that this could go um, again in front of, uh, town meeting and get the, instead of being decided at a committee level. If we could get, uh, a better feel from the town overall, how they would feel about spending. Now we're talking close to five million dollars for this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Nat, if I may just add one thing, um, and, and I appreciate Mary's comments. The, um, state is asking for the, there must be, um, pre-application that goes in by, I think, the twenty-seventh or twenty-eighth of October with, with the new financials and the commitment. So, um, that's, that's the another problem in terms of the timing here.
That wouldn't align with the special, um, town meeting. Yeah, understood. Okay, so, uh, oh, sorry. Yes, Lee, I know you were, uh, um, Don, we're still, we're still holding up on public comments at the end. So we'll come to you in a moment. Go ahead, Lee.
Thank you. Um, so first, I, I, I think it just, um, make people aware that it's really DHCD that vets these budgetary numbers with a fine tooth comb with a staff of experts, you know, that they're being asked to provide, you know, either direct approval for financing or, or, uh, tax credit financing, you know, seven, eight, nine million dollars, whatever the ultimate number may be. So to the extent there's, there's questions about uh, the developer's budget, that, that's certainly going to be vetted, um, you know, down to the nth degree by the state. Um, the, the thing I wanted to say earlier was since, since, uh, Linda brought it up, the, the request uh, for advice of town council was whether the developer could be held legally um, to actually build the project, specific performance is the legal term that's used, even if the town didn't provide the additional million dollars. So at least one member of the board is, is considering the town's legal options to require the, the developer to move forward. So, um, I, I encourage everyone on, on this meeting to go back and, and watch that select board meeting from September nineteenth, if you're interested. Um, this, our section's about half hour, forty-five minutes, but, um, I think it would be valuable. Thank you.
Thank you, Lee. Um, so Elizabeth, our, what we're looking to do is just basically make a statement from, uh, the planning board in support of, of the request, right, of the, of the million dollars.
Um, so what I'd, um, like to do is, um, take, uh, Linda Miller's points and statements that she'd make, draft that into, um, uh, should the board agree in that, uh, uh, vote to send that type of statement to the select board, um, draft that memo. Uh, if Linda's available and, um, next couple of days to review that memo and, um, edit it on behalf of the board and then send that forward.
Okay. And if we, so would, should we, we won't have time before. We shouldn't wait till the next meeting, obviously. We should do it before that. So, we'll take a vote today that we're in agreement that, that, you know, effectively what Linda said earlier, very well stated, um, would stand in as our, uh.
And then authorize Linda to review the, um, draft memo and then I will forward it to the select board.
Yes. Well, one second, Sue. I, I wanna, I wanna give an opportunity. We, Don had his hand raised at one point. I want to give a chance for any public comment on this. Don, please go ahead. unmute yourself, give your name, address, um, the usual things.
Oh, tha- thanks, Nate. Um, Don Cupka, uh, thirty-nine Devon Street in Concord. And, um, in, and also a member of FinCom. And this, this came to, uh, to, came up in our recent FinCom meeting. And so the question then is, oh, also, by, by the way, in addition to the million dollars, was it also, I believe it was, uh, would we provide in-kind wastewater, uh, services for the development? And noted that there have been, you know, repeated requests over the, over time. So I looked online to see the contract that we have with this developer. Because we have a fiduciary obligation to the taxpayers, of course, in the town to make sure that whatever we, whatever funds we recommend are in terms of with, with the agreement. So, Lee, I'm wondering if you could, if you could send, you know, produce that or send it to, uh, to FinCom, that'd be really helpful. Um, the only thing I did find online was the draft of the TIF agreement. Now, the state approved it, so I'm assuming it was executed. And it's calls for the, on the developer's side of that agreement, in exchange for the two points, more than two million in, in tax relief, that the developer would, um, invest, uh, nearly twenty million dollars of private funds and deliver the building by April of twenty twenty-two. April first, with an outside date of April first of twenty twenty-three. Um, so obviously that's, that, that's not happening, um, which, um, I'm, I'm sure you're aware, but it, what will happen to the, that TIF financing? Um, does that mean that that has to go back to town meeting again? Um, so two questions for you, Lee. What is our agreement? What does our contract look like? And then, um, uh, what's the status of the TIF?
I'll start with the TIF. I, I believe that agreement includes a force majeure clause, which, which I, I can't imagine wouldn't cover COVID. Um, but I, I assume, so the three agreements are the TIF agreement, um, a memorandum of agreement and a developer's agreement that's between just the developer and CHDC. And I assume that town council is reviewing all three of those documents and hopefully will provide an opinion. Regarding enforceability or whatever else they, they might see. I'm, I'm not going to speak for them. Um, you know, before they, they weigh in on that, um, the memorandum agreement is available on the town website under the Junction Village Project. But if you're not able to find that, I can work through Elizabeth to, to send that to you as well as any other documents that you'd like.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Don. Pamela.
Hi, Pamela Dritt, thirteen Concord Green. Linda, you said that an all-electric, um, construction was not possible at this point for this. But I don't understand how that, can you tell me why you believe that? Uh, since I'm sure that if we got the experts together, they could put up a proposal to the developer that would demonstrate to him the considerable cost savings, not just in building the project, but particularly in running it of doing all-electric. The savings in not having gas. The savings in allowing cooling, having cooling, inexpensive cooling for the entire building. But it, it's, it's financially a bad idea not to do this. And I really am in favor of all-new construction being all-electric. Both financially and environmentally. To the, to the benefit of the contractor himself, the developer themselves. Can we not? Why can't we do that?
So, so, I, I, I agree with what you're saying. Unfortunately, that's not within the scope of what, you know, we, we are here for, uh, for this particular, uh, development. So.
All right, girl, just ask Linda separately. Sorry.
Okay. Thank you. All right, Sue, quickly, I want to, I want to keep us on, on schedule.
Yes, I ordered a comment regarding the letter that Linda and Elizabeth will be drafting that, um, I may certainly be overruled by other planning board members on this, but I have very mixed feelings about the um, benefits of the project in keeping us in line for being one of the ten fossil fuel-free communities in Massachusetts, because I would be both proud and relieved for Concord to be one of those communities for our own sake. But I also recognize that if we drop off the list, a city like Boston or Cambridge might take the place. And in terms of, uh, fossil-free energy hookups in the state, that would be far more beneficial. So I personally would rather leave that out of our letter and just not mention it. But again, I could be overruled.
So it's my understanding as far as that legislation and the town communities, it is based off, um, your, that community meeting, the 10% as of, um, the legislation period of time, which would be uh, December of, um, and Lee, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe it's December of twenty twenty-one.
Well, okay, but in terms of a reason that I would put into the letter, I would, in, in that case, that would be another reason to leave it out because it's also irrelevant, it would be irrelevant by date.
Yeah, I, I would agree. It's better to not even entertain that that's in question, my opinion.
Be- because it isn't, it is going to be in question. I'm not, you know, um, the, the, the ten, the, the legislation dealing with the ten communities and fossil fuel-free is, um, you know, that, that's a separate discussion from whether, uh, you know, Chris, whether the board wishes to support, you know, what it takes to move forward with Christopher Heights.
It was in Linda's list of reasons. So I'm just commenting that I think that we should not include that particular reason in the letter. And it, for my own sake, that's all I'm saying.
But that's fine. If, I mean, if the rest of the board agrees.
Do you want to do a straw poll on whether to include that component or not? Can, we can do that quickly. So let's
Include it.
Okay, well, let's put it this way. Those in favor of including it, just, uh, uh, I'll, I'll run down the list. So Mark.
Include it.
Haley.
No.
Linda.
You're muted.
She's thinking about it.
I'm thinking, I, I, it, it's not, it, to me, it's not if, if there's objections, it's, I don't think it's a central part of my argument. So I, it doesn't, it's, I'm indifferent. I would, I would put it in, but.
Okay, so you're, you're an in. We'll go with that. Sue.
Out.
I'm, I'm an in, so, uh, I think that leaves us three to, three to two.
Okay.
Somebody would please like to make a motion that I
Draft a letter based on Linda's comments and have Linda review it and forward that letter of support for the project based on all of those points to the select board. Um, I'd love that motion and second to be made.
I'll make a motion that Elizabeth will draft the, a memo based on the comments made by, uh, Linda inclusive of, uh, what we just did a straw poll on, uh, for Christopher Heights, uh, assisted living project, uh, that we will send off to the select board for their October third meeting.
And, and ha- have Linda.
Have Linda review, uh, our behalf.
Thank you.
Uh, can I get a second on that?
Second.
Second.
Uh, you heard Mark first, so and then we'll do a quick votes. Uh, Mark, in favor?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes, so. Thank you, Lee. I appreciate taking the time to, uh, uh, give us an update on that.
Great. Thank you for your time and for the support. And I'd encourage anyone to attend the meeting, select board meeting on Monday, either in person or via Zoom. Have a good night. Thanks again.
Thank you. And also thank you to Linda and Mary for, uh, sharing your input from, uh, the select board meeting. All right, let's move on to another, another small topic, the draft scenic, uh, scenic roads by law rules and regulation discussion.
Oh, so Nathan, if I can, um, help frame this discussion, um, given the fact that it's, um, you know, ten to nine.
Yes.
Um, and the board still has quite a bit to get through. Um, I, um, I think it would be helpful if the j- board just, had an initial conversation about, um, the comments from the historical commission um, and the comments raised by Concord Public Works. Um, and just provided me your initial feedback on those comments uh, so that I can, um, try and basically try and find the, the balance for the, the board on direction for the rules and regs. Uh, make, uh, revisions to the rules and regs. Um, and then have those revisions go back to the historical commission and the Concord Public Works Commission. As well as, uh, at that point, I feel it's, um, at a point where, um, you know, it can be sent to certain, um, you know, there's half a dozen, you know, local developers who do quite a bit of work in Concord to get their, uh, feedback as well. And then bring this back to um, the planning board for your second meeting in October.
Okay, so the, the rules and regs draft that you sent us, uh, in our packet is the one we should work off. We should just look at that, review that and individually.
Um, well, if you wanted to, um, just, uh, initially look at the comment letters from, um, the From um the historical commission and from public works. And just to have a con- conversation about, you know, the comments that they made in there or um. Whether um you know, the board wants. To just. If everybody has reviewed that those documents and then individually, just um you know, provide me, you know. Your thoughts and comments, and then I can try and go back and amend the rules and regs. To send back to the commission and the public works, the historical commission and the public works commission and different stakeholders.
Yeah, okay, um. So. I was looking at both the uh. Cause there were two public works. Or at least they're written as public works, right? Yeah, both public works. Or no, yeah, yeah, engineering.
So the feedback um that I got from uh Concord Public Works. And the feedback provided to the board is um. There's uh within public works is within all of our um town departments lately, there's been a significant amount of turnover. And um. Difficulty filling positions, uh and the public works commission also takes, um I believe July and August off. So uh the the commission had just an initial discussion about this in September. Um and. Is prepared to have a little bit more coordinated conversation about this at their October twelfth uh meeting. Um one of the items that was um brought up in the comments made at the Public Works Commission meeting. In September um dealt with, um they are. Feel that it's important to um see if the town manager will authorize town council. To um look at a basically prepare a legal review to understand. Interplay between existing laws, bylaws, regulations and policies. As it relates to the scenic roads by law and the scenic roads rules and regs. Um that is not something that I can do, that does require uh approval from the town manager. To um get town council to 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 do that, so that would be something um I would ask. Um you know, whether the board felt they agreed with um or um. You know, or 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 not, um and um some of the um. There. Definitely was at least some um miscommunication as far as the review of the draft regs. And um the. Comment letter from the engineering division on procedures um. So it there there's definitely a disconnect with Concord Public Works and um I'm hopeful by your. October twenty-fifth meeting um that I can figure out where that disconnect um is. Uh what happened and um try to address those, but. And then the comment letter from uh the historical commission. Definitely provided uh more uh focused uh information and uh comments. On the different sections in the rules and regs where the planning board had previously had questions. Uh so I'm I'm not sure how the board wants to move forward.
Well, it seems like there's a lot, a lot to unpack.
There is, there is a lot, so.
I I will start with the one clear thing that you were asking for us, which was whether or not to um. Uh you know, seek guidance from town council uh on the connection between um. Uh between the rules and regs and the uh the bylaw. And I mean, my immediate answer to that is yes, so so that we're not running into uh issues, uh you know, longer term. I I don't know if anybody else feels differently on on the board regarding that.
That almost seems like something that's got to be done first to make sure we're not, you know, conflicting before we go any further down the road with it, don't you think? I mean, uh.
Um I I think the board has to at least have a a a a solid draft of their rules and regs. For it to be a, you know, productive evaluation on the part of town council.
Okay.
Which, I mean, I think you're 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 getting there, I think. Um with the input from the historical commission on definitely on like some of the definitions. Um and uh I I mean, I think I think you're definitely on, you know, on that the right track to be able to have that. Uh for council.
Uh this is not down.
Yeah, so what you're saying, Elizabeth, is like, let's get it to a better place, and then we would do that, of course, but like. For some reason, public works is wanting that to happen right now.
Um I don't, I don't think they specifically stated, you know, have have it right now, but just to recommend that that happened. Um I just know how the process with town council works, um just given all of the zoning bylaw amendments. That the planning board has had them review, um and to have them review something. Without having something as a comparison or a baseline to review it against other things is not productive.
Yep.
Yeah.
So go ahead, uh Linda.
I was just saying that um I listened to the meeting where they just uh the public works meeting where they discussed um the scenic. And and that was um very informative and and they. They do seem to think that there are lots of areas where there is po- potential for overlap and confusion. Um but I I think um if we had, like, as you said, uh um more straightforward document in hand. Then you'd be able to make that distinction, but I think they had some very good points and that there is. Um the potential for that, I think also their concerns were that um. The tree warden is doing a lot of this al- already and has expertise that we don't have. And I was thinking maybe at some point, again, when we had in hand a a good draft. It might be useful to have the tree warden come to um the planning board and um give us their. Input is as well, um. Um and then the other questions about what constitutes a stone wall. Um I hadn't thought about, um but really um their their point about, well, if you're on a historic. Road, but um you you've put some boulders in to keep people from parking on your lawn. Does that constitute a stone wall or the retaining walls? I mean, they they had some interesting points that I would not have thought of and that. I don't think that have are fully captured in in what the um historic district um has pointed out either. So they they had some interesting issues.
Yeah, I thought that, so actually, it's interesting point that the one about the uh sort of what constitutes a stone wall. Uh I know the uh CPW, you know, had, and there's, you know, to define. Uh you know, refined to include a minimum age and original purpose of placement. But I I'm not entirely sure that is relevant to it being a scenic byway. I mean, if somebody were to install a. Uh I'll use the term loosely, authentic stone wall, um and it and it visually suited the purpose. Um. That it that our scenic by, you know, our scenic byway. Um our scenic, yeah, scenic roads by law uh should be applicable to those as well. Um I do agree to a certain size and dimensions or something like that makes sense, but. Um so it's not just some, as Linda said, somebody just putting some boulders in their front yard to to keep people from parking along their their front lawn.
Um so I do, and this is where I um would definitely, um but I I agree a lot of the, you know, the the. Points that public works has made are um, you know, are are good points to further. Um discuss and and find the balance. So as far as a, you know, a definition of a stone wall, there's there's definitions of, you know, stone walls. And what you that goes beyond what's in currently in in the draft that can help um refine that. To address that point that public works made. And um I would be going back to um our senior planner, Anne Clifford. Um who is going to be an invaluable resource um advancing this. Given um her expertise at the Payne estate and the, you know, it's an Olmstead landscape and. Um but then also getting additional feedback, and this is where that second round of having this go to um the historical commission. You know, getting their additional feedback on those points, so I I just I just think there, you know. There just needs to be, you know, an additional um, you know, back and forth conversation to advance it. To the next, to the next level.
Understood, so I I guess I'll ask the question some of us are probably wondering, what are you looking for us to provide to you right? Right now to add to that uh uh for the draft um rules and regs.
Um so the 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 main point was uh, you know, whether the board wanted me to request town council. Um that's from the town manager, town council review it as, you know, this moves forward. Um and then I think um some of the. Um other points. One other point uh as far as decisions um that they brought up. Alternatives for work subject to um reasonableness. And staff recommending affordability be considered. Um. So I I mean, there's, and so I'm, yeah, I would, I'm not quite, I'm not quite sure. Cause um. In advancing this, I think there can be definitely additional conversation about making sure that there's no duplication of review. Um making sure that um, you know, there's, you know, there isn't redundancies as. You know, as far as somebody having to do, you know, provide two performance bonds or that type of things. Um. The the one comment that, you know, I'm not, can the public works commission request redundancies be removed from the regulations? Does the bylaw that was passed allow for this? So um and I think they're talking about like the public hearings. Um, you know, n- n- no, the 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 public hearing that's required under the scenic roads legislation is a requirement. Under the legislation, so um it can't just not happen because the town, you know, the tree warden's having a public hearing. And the legislation's very specific, it it specifically says, no, you will, you can have a joint meeting. But there is going to be both, so um. So some of some of those comments are ones that I just think need to be elaborated a little bit more for public works. Um. The one item um from a town staff perspective deals with, you know, if there is a um. Tree warden does have to have a public hearing, um those are usually held during the mornings when he's at work. And, you know, not at a night meeting, so is is that something that um? You know, from a planning board perspective, is is that something that the board can accommodate? You know, can, you know, four out of seven members make it to um a public hearing in the mornings? You know.
I when I, when I listened to his presentation, he said that essentially he goes on site to the tree. The public hearing is scheduled, and if anyone shows up, then he listens to them and makes a decision. And if nobody shows up, he just makes the decision, so I couldn't see that the planning board is gonna have a quorum. Meet whenever he he wants at a certain site, it's just not.
No, um, no, he he will, he will definitely have to schedule them. But um, you know, it it couldn't, you know, it wouldn't be at, it wouldn't be at night. So it would be, you know.
Well, I think you'd have to take a picture of it and and submit it. And we look at it on Zoom, I guess, and say, but tree.
Yeah.
Go or not, I, you know.
We do not go onsite for everything we do, so yes.
This is kind of similar to the tree preservation by law, it's, you know, some of these things are not going to be ironed out in the rules and regs. But, you know, but having that flexibility, you know, it's, all the rules and regs say it's, you know, it's gonna be a joint. Public hearing. You know, how how that happens, we'll figure it out when the first one happens. Um. But it it in the in the rules and regs and it it doesn't need to say that it's going to be in the morning, a joint public hearing. On site with the tree board, and that 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 doesn't need to be there, so. Um.
And then some of their comments deal with consideration of adoption for new scenic roads. Um. The regulations don't don't speak to. What would happen for um additional roads? If an additional road is proposed to be added to the scenic roads by law, it has to go to town meeting. And then and there'll be, you know, conversations about that prior to a a warrant article being placed on. Um the town meeting warrant, so.
I thought that came, that came up at town meeting or even before, when we had meetings jointly on that. That the process would be that we would, you to add additional road or roads, you would need to. Uh uh bring that back to town meeting for it to be voted on, I. I don't, I think that process was, I thought that process was understood. So, all right, so. I will go back to. What, what do you need us to provide to you right now or what? Because I I feel like we're talking a lot about uh, you know, the the comments from from CPW. Uh and and obviously, you know, further development of the the draft rules and regs. Um. But other than adding like what CHC is also written and recommended. It doesn't sound like you want us to discuss specifics uh in terms of, you know.
If any of the board members have specific items, um you know, I'm. I welcome any additional comments or feedbacks. Um i- if if not, I will, I will attempt to. To take the historical commission's comments, public works com- comments. Um. Revise the rules and regs, um get. And then get further feedback from both of those commissions as well as certain stakeholders and. Um hopefully bring. Have all that come back to the planning board for your meeting on October twenty-fifth.
And then will town council review it prior to that or after we sign off on?
I I that I that I can't, that I can't tell you, I could, I mean, I'll, I will send the email to town manager tomorrow. Uh with the request, um and then.
I mean, I would think we would want to still wait, though, I mean, and have at least one more meeting.
Yep.
What relative to. Town meeting schedule like we're pretty far ahead on this one, right? Or.
No, the rules and regs will just require a notice public hearing.
Oh, 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 okay, okay, okay.
Once they're finalized. So I would imagine between the next revision that. And getting comments back from Historical Commission and Public Works Commission and stakeholders. There would be town council review prior to the public hearing.
Sure.
Okay.
And maybe just an action, I mean, it sounds like some people and Linda especially. As always, has done a lot of digestion of this already, but I mean, maybe just for next meeting and those of us that haven't like. Should just come with any final, I don't know, comments or whatever to be more useful. To like a final draft.
Well, I mean, I'll have the, the, I'll have the. Yes, I mean, you'll have the, the next iteration of the draft. Along with additional comments, review comments from the commission and Historical Commission and Public Works Commission.
Yeah.
So it'll be, I mean, it'll be advanced along, you know, further.
A month. Well, yeah, yeah, I mean, yeah, well, and I trust your judgment with like, it sounds like Public Works gave you. So much that some of it's unnecessary and maybe you're struggling with like what to do with it. So to the extent you. Need any help with that or whatever, just appoint one of us to.
Okay.
Try to help.
Thank you.
That's what we get for going for too much input, right?
No, it's. It's important, it'll, it'll be fine.
I mean, I don't know if it's worth like talking to, if, to the extent there's these open questions on process or whatever, like. As I think the historic commission pointed out, like most other towns have this and probably also have. The tree thing and have faced the similar.
Yeah.
Issue. So.
Yeah, well, I'll, I'll, I'll definitely be exploring the, the whole tree board and interaction part of it.
Okay. So we're ready to move on to the MBTA communities zoning requirement guidelines.
Oh, sure. So. Again, I mean, uh, this is. I don't know if you. Want to try and. I, to, to go through the, the whole. The whole memo is a lot. So I don't know if. There's specific sections that you want me. To, if anybody had questions about a certain section or.
I didn't look at it, but like, what's the upshot, I guess, for us? Like, I remember at least. One, one of the past few times we talked about it, like we, we, it was going down a path of like, okay, towns. May just decide not to comply and like it might not like be that big of a deal. Like, is that where we're still at or have? Since the public comment period, have things gotten a lot better or stayed the same?
No, I mean, as, as.
You know, the conversation on whether the town should try to move forward this year. I, I, I can't, I can't answer. It, it's. This is.
It's a, it's a lot. It's. And it's. It's complicated. And so, you know. Whether, whether it's worth it or not.
Is, is not, it, it's not something that I can, I can provide an opinion on to the board. You know, are there? Grant, you know, grants that should the town not comply with it that we're not gonna be eligible for? Sure. And, but it's gonna be up to the community on how to weigh, you know, way moving, you know. Moving forward with this, I'm. And I'm just, I'm challenged to provide the board any guidance. Specifically given. You know, the experience that the board just had with the whole Thorough Depot Business District. Linda, sorry.
Yeah.
Make any sense to have the chair speak with the. Chair of the Select Board and maybe the Chair of the Finance Committee. To, with perhaps you participating as well to come to some. To have some ideas or some discussion that perhaps can clarify. What everyone might feel like the planning board should move forward with.
Well, I mean, I'm not. I, I think that's a, a great suggestion because I don't, I don't see this being. Necessarily the planning, the planning board's job. I, I think they're a participant in this, but I agree if. If the Select Board and the Finance Committee are not in support of trying to move forward. With, you know, meeting this requirement. Or, you know, whether, you know, they're in support of. Figuring out a way to gauge the community's support or, you know, whether. The Select Board FinCom and the Planning Board. Want to move forward to make a request to, you know, like Mass Housing Partnership or. To assist with some type of community engagement. I don't even know what that would look like, but. I, I don't think it's the planning board's decision on whether to. To go through this extensive exercise. On whether the town should try and meet the MBTA community's requirements or not.
I would, I would go another step and say, try is a different question from, do, do we even have the ability? To meet the, you know, the guidelines under section five, the, the reasonable size. That's fif- fifty acres and we need to have, they're saying, well, this is saying that fifteen percent. So almost eleven hundred units would need to be able to.
Um, no, one thousand.
Ninety-four.
Yeah, almost eleven hundred. So, but, but it's not, so you could have twenty-five acres around Thorough Depot. And twenty-five acres around West Concord commuter rail station. I mean, so ev- every, every community can meet this requirement. You, you can, you can develop zoning. That meets this requirement. But that's, that's not a problem. Every community could do that.
It's, I think it's less, for me, it's less the, well, fifty acres does seem like a lot. It's more the nearly eleven hundred units and how that would be sized into. And I understand that it's, it's just allowing for the potential to have up to.
Right.
One thousand ninety-four units, but I'm just trying, I'm trying to envision how that would even fit. Within the existing, you know, even if we did overlay.
Oh.
How that would work.
Correct. And but, and but that's not, you know. I guess that's somewhat my point when you, when you think back to the thorough, you know, the work that went into the thorough depot. Business district and that's, you know, that's a fraction of what this magnitude is.
Yes.
Ev- every community can develop zoning to meet this requirement. It's, you know. It's, does the community want to? To, you know, how is, how is that zoning going to look? E- especially given, you know, the parameters and, and. You know, everything that. Was listed and restricted as far as the Thorough Depot zoning, you're, you're, you're talking about a level that's. Significantly higher. So is that, you know, greater density and height and all of those things? So. There's, there's just a basic question. That I don't think it's for the planning board to. To say yes or no, whether to move forward on trying to even figure this out. I think that needs to be. You know, as Linda said, you know, Select Board and FinCom and then maybe assistance from. You know, Mass Housing Partnership on doing some type of community forum. But I don't think it's the planning board's job to make that decision.
So who brought it before us? We have enough on our plate without this, don't you think? I mean, so you're just sort of bringing it to our attention? To ask the question?
Well, I think we'd always, it, it hadn't been fully developed, so we didn't know what was.
Right, I know, I know, I know, but.
Well, so, you know, traditionally, you know, the planning board. Is, is the one to watch. What is happening in the state as far as, you know, zoning and legislation and, and those types of things. So. Um, I. I think, you know, unless there's certain sections, you know, in. This memo that needs to be changed other than the, you know, the end. If everybody agrees as far as Linda's suggestion that, you know, the planning board meet with. You know, the Chair of the FinCom and the Select Board to, you know, discuss. You know, whether to move forward with this and, and.
And probably the town manager.
Oh, definitely, yeah, definitely the town manager. And, you, you know, and. You know, whether to move forward and, and how to move forward and. And. And that's. And, and so at least the planning board has done, you know, their initial, you know, part of your charge. To, you know. To put this information out there because it is, it is a requirement.
Well, could I, I make a motion?
Sure.
That the planning board requests that Chair Nathan Bostet. Sets up a meeting with. The Chair and or delegate of the Select Board. The town manager or their delegate. The town planner and the Chair or delegate from the Finance Committee. To discuss the next steps to take. Regarding the MBTA community's multifamily zoning compliance guidelines. And. Report back to the. Planning. Board. There, what, what consensus has been reached?
I will second that since it is me.
So, before you vote, do you want me to, to amend this memo? To be from, you know, the planning board to the Select Board with that request at the bottom?
I think that, yeah, I think that's reasonable.
Okay. Wait a minute, doesn't this, didn't you already send this memo to the Select Board or is this only a draft?
No, this is just a draft.
Oh darn, then I have to send you a couple of comments. Typos, so they don't have to be handled in this meeting. Yeah.
That's fine.
All right, since we've had a motion, it's been seconded. We'll take a quick votes as I see you, Linda.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes.
Sue.
Yes.
Haley.
Yes.
I am for myself also a yes, so we will do that. I appreciate that, Elizabeth. I do see, Don, you raised your hand. Give you a chance to speak about this.
Yeah, hi, thanks. I, I did take a quick look into this and it, it's those figures that. Fifty acres and eleven hundred units. It, it's, it's the maximum. It, it, it's also subject to a cap of one and a half percent of developable land. So, so the first question were for you, Elizabeth, is what is our? Developable land within a half a mile of transit station. I think the. I suspect that the total here is gonna be much lower for Concord than, than the fifty acres. And I see from the state's website that they have a tool, an online tool. For this, for this purpose, for Thames to use. So have we, have we played with that to see what the actual impact would be?
No, because. The definition of developable land is based on a definition of what's included and excluded in the regs. And it will require the town's GIS analyst to use that online tool. And mass GIS data layers to go through and do that analysis. That's not something that I can do. If I understood.
That I could help to get done in some way by requesting something?
Just availability of staff time to be able to, to, to make that happen.
If I understood that your memo correctly. Elizabeth, you said, it says DHCD is estimated five hundred and nineteen acres of developable station. Area so that Concord does have, even if one assumes that some of that will end up being excluded for one reason. Or another that we will not have trouble finding that there are fifty acres that are technically. Zonable, rezonable.
Sue, Sue, it's, it's a maximum of one point five percent of the land. So if it's. Five hundred and some acres, it's five. Seven and a half acres. I, I mean, unless I'm misunderstanding.
No, I, it's five hundred and nineteen acres of developable, full station area. So that's already. Restricting it to the half mile circle around an MBTA commuter rail station.
Okay. Well, I, I'm no, I'm no, no expert on it. It just, from a quick read, it looked like it's saying one and a half percent of the developable. Area.
Very true, but I believe that still leaves us with. Plenty of land that the DACD would consider viable.
So it's either fifty acres or one point five percent of the developable land in the MBTA community. So.
Meaning the town of Concord.
With meaning the entire town of Concord.
Yeah.
I, I can tell you there's more than. You know, there's more developable land at one point five percent than fifty acres. I don't think that would be less.
In answer to your question, Mark, why did this come before us? I would say it's because if zoning is to be changed. It's our job as the planning board to put forth an article about it. Linda's point is well taken that if the town doesn't even want to do it, why should we spend an enormous amount of time and Elizabeth's point and everyone's point? Developing such an article just to have it be horribly shot down. But on the other hand, if we don't come up with an idea, how would people even know what? Is potentially under consideration. To me, it seems like a terrible chicken and egg problem. I mean, we could take a compass and draw a, a, a circle around each MBTA station. And make it be big enough to exclude the excludable wetlands and otherwise undevelopable land. And then say, well, what if we just said this was. Three stories, multifamily, fifteen units per acre density and hold a public beating and. See what the public said, but on the other hand. That's, I, I hate to put forward proposals that are half baked because people think they're baked. Of course, if you put forward proposals that are baked, then people say, why didn't you give us a chance to have any input before you bake your proposal? So again, chicken and egg.
Well, so, so um, and I'm not gonna, we don't have to have.
That's.
A much more significant conversation about this, but I want to uh, make it very clear. There are no proposals. Um, that, that is, that is a word that means something very specific to certain people. Um, there, there is no proposal, um, should the town move forward with zoning, even the. Regulations from DHCD rec- you know, recognizes the fact that. Um, just because it is zoned, doesn't mean it can be built. For whatever reason or not, whether it's traffic, infrastructure, sewer capacity, water. Wetlands, open space, whatever the reason. So DHC does. Does, does not care whether it gets built or not. Um, and and that's, that's a very specific thing that needs. To be put out there. If the town wants to move forward in some manner. Um, zoning is uh, is a regulatory tool. Um, and it does not mean there will be a proposal at all.
That's a good point. When I said proposal, I meant proposal for a zoning bylaw warrant article and nothing more, but I should have spoken more clearly.
The, the last point I'll make as far as what the town could be giving up, the, the one unknown. Um, is, has to deal with the Concord Housing Authority. Um, and the, it, you know, it could be a potential loss of um, ten percent of their funding. Um, if the town is found in non-compliance, I have. Have not been able to get a um, a straight answer. On how the local capital project funds, which are gaming commission funds. That get allocated through state legislature. Um, and partial ten percent of those funds goes towards all of the housing authorities within the Commonwealth, so. Um, if we're not in compliance, there is some level of funds. That the housing authority may not get. Um, nobody can tell me. Um, yet what that level is, so um. All right, so I will um, move forward. I will amend that memo and um, send it on to the select board and. Um, the finance committee and the town manager.
Thank you.
Sounds good. All right, I, for the next one, I I actually wanna kind of flip the order of things, just so we can get a couple of things out of the way and then. Sort of go into the potential zoning bylaw amendments and be able to stop cold. At some point, if we run out of steam. So if we can do the meeting minutes. Get that out of the way. Quickly, it's for August ninth. I was not here for that meeting, so I will trust that others who were there uh, can speak. To whether the minutes are accurate or not. Anybody?
Nobody.
I have already spoken.
I, I think we, um, Sue and I sent in some um, edits. And so those were also posted, so unless anyone has any um, additional. Edits they'd like to make, I would um, propose that we approve the minutes of the planning board meeting of August nine. Twenty twenty-two um, as amended.
Or no? No, it's, oh, you're right, because it was already sent out.
It's already sent out, so the meeting of August nine, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
All right, we have a second, so I'll run down the line. Uh, those in favor of. Uh, of those, of adopting those minutes, uh, Linda.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes.
Sue.
Yes.
Haley.
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. And then uh, any planning board liaison town planner updates?
Oh, I have an update. Um, well, it's a good and it's a bad update. Um, I'll give you the, the, the. Well, I'll give you the good part first. Um, last week on the fifteenth, um, the. Project review committee for MassDOTs um, approved. The Assabett River Bridge, um, so it is now a formally recognized project. That will be programmed into the tip during the next program phase. Um, and it was approved with a construction value at um, up to eight million dollars.
I can guess the bad news.
Um, the bad news is.
It took a little over four months to get that to happen, so the consultant is now. Four months behind as far as the design and given mass DOTs. Process for bridge selection and design review. I am currently asking the uh, Mass Trails grant people if. Um, there is a extension provision for the funding if it cannot be expended by. June thirtieth of twenty twenty-three. So um, I have not heard back, um, and I'm hoping that our grant funding is not in jeopardy. Um, at this point, because um, given mass DOTs. Um, scheduling and how they go about reviewing projects and the time. Um, that they provide themselves, they get ninety days for an initial review and thirty days for every revision made. Um, our consultant does not feel that they can expend. Um, it is fairly certain they cannot expend all of the grant funds by June thirtieth of twenty twenty-three.
But the good news is, is that it's. It is an approved tip project for eight million dollars.
It is good.
It is good. And I was wrong about the bad news, which I was thought was the consultant was now going to be projecting a fifteen million dollar cost.
No, they're projecting six.
Oh.
All right.
Well, maybe they can spend six by. The deadline.
No, but it's the design funds.
Yeah, the design, yeah, the design funds, so.
Right.
Program wise, um, is everything moves forward, uh, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five? You would probably, the earliest that you could probably see construction would be. Would be twenty twenty-five or twenty twenty-six.
Of two to three years. All I have.
Okay.
All right, uh. If there are no other, are there any liaison reports? Okay, let's jump right into the zoning bylaw amendments. I, I know, uh, let's, let's do the restaurant. Let's do the restaurant one. I know, uh, Elizabeth, you have some updates for that.
Um, I'm gonna show my screen. Um, Sue had provided me um. Couple of her comments, so I'm gonna work off um, her, her draft. You can see um, some of the changes um, she had made. Um, which my first question is, Merriam Webster says fast food is a hyphenated word. So. I don't know why the hyphen got removed there, but.
I didn't remove. Oh, no, I did. Okay, I don't care. If they say it's hyphenated, then I'm not gonna. Oh, ah, no, I know why I changed that. It's because I was doing that based on what the former. What it currently says in our zoning bylaw. If we are removing the prohibition in our existing zoning bylaw, it says fast space food. However, going forward, if we would like to spell it as fast hyphen food, I don't have a problem with that.
So this is um, just the.
To determine whether the town.
Doesn't, doesn't matter.
Yeah, okay, anyway, yeah.
So my first question, um. Was whether clarifying, so the, the reason I looked at separating between a full service restaurant. And a fast food restaurant, um, part of this is just for clarity, the other part is. To add. Um, for existing four point. Five point four restaurant full, you know, service and then add a four point five. Point five, a new for restaurant, fast food, um, throws off so many things in the zoning bylaw for every use. To change all of those numbers and all of those uses, numbers within the whole zoning bylaw. Um, is not something I'm willing. To try and do, um, so. This is an alternative to be able to insert. Um, alphabetically, uh, a use. And and I, and I may go back and forth on this yet, but um. That's why this is showing up as separated in this manner. Um, it may be on that. Um, we can just tack on restaurant, fast food. With this existing paragraph, so this is just something um, from a formatting standpoint that I will be further thinking about.
Yeah, I just, I sort of struggled with really what is the difference between full service and fast food? And I know that there is, but I couldn't really figure out it, is it because you use disposable versus. Reusable plates? It didn't seem to make that, I mean, what? What are we trying to accomplish with this definition and distinction?
So the um, the distinction is, you know, where you have a, a restaurant. Um, where they, you know, have. Tableside ordering and bringing food to a table and people sit down and have a meal in a restaurant compared to. Um, just going to a counter, ordering and having things, you know, in takeout and then you leave. Um, so, you know, that's, that's the distinction and the current issue is. And this was the um, couple of months ago, and and I can provide the information again, dealing with. Um, what happened when. Um, historically, how the building commissioner has interpreted. A restaurant when there is a fast food prohibition is you cannot. Um, you cannot have just. Um, you know, a takeout counter, you have to have. Um, at least twelve seats for patrons to sit down. You know, things. Uh, if somebody wants to be served on plates in China, sitting down in the restaurant, that has to be available. Uh, and what that does is that kicks in. Um, of, you know, particular parking requirement, it kicks in. Um, different plumbing code requirements, it kicks in different food code requirements.
Well, I, I don't really understand. I mean, if, I don't really understand why all of those things change, because if I, I can see, yes, if. Because it seems to me like. You know, if you go into some restaurants. They're merging, you know, you can, you can buy a sandwich to go. Um, or you can buy a sandwich and stay, but there are a lot of restaurants where there's no one bringing you. Something at your seat, you, I mean, I guess that's more the cafeteria type where you go through a line. But it, it seems like it's all. Very fluid and um, if the issue is. The public health, you know, the, the health side of it or the building side of it, that's not something we really deal with. But the parking side of it is, but I couldn't figure out on the parking side. Um, you know, you, you could go to um, get a cup of coffee at Starbucks. And sit there for three hours. Versus you could go to a. A restaurant, have a s- a sit down, have a slice of pizza and leave in ten minutes. So I, I just really had trouble. Figuring out what we're trying to accomplish. With the, with these distinctions that I'm not sure are. I mean, are out there anymore.
Well, it is our job to, also to regulate. Uses, or at least it, it's part, I don't know if it's our job to, but we certainly do it, but I also have been struggling with. How to draw a line when there's such a continuum between a three hour, ten course meal. Um, with tableside service, uh. A buffet, a cafeteria where you go up to the counter, but they just. Serve things out of a few dishes for you and someplace where you run in, they jam stuff in a bag and you run out again. We seem to be drawing the line purely on the basis of disposable. Containers, given that many fast food restaurants provide some, some seating for people who may feel like. Sitting down and and I also don't know where to go with this.
So I, I am all, um. And and. Again, it sometimes overthinking things causes things to just. Escalate. Um, so if.
If there was just one definition for a restaurant and no distinction in, you know, fast food. Um, and just the, the language regarding.
And, and just in the pro, you know, prohibited uses, just fast food. And that language were deleted.
What would be, you know, what would be the, you know, would there be an unintended consequence?
No.
And, and the only, the only thing I can think of is having to amend the parking. In some, some manner. Or, because currently it's one space per three seats plus one space per employee on the largest shift. If you had a, let's say, you, you had the Asian bubble tea. Where um, they weren't, they initially didn't want to have any seats. And people just came and went and they had three employees on the largest shift. You, you would definitely have to incorporate something that. Dealt with, you know, if the restaurant had no seats, then your parking requirement is going to be this. Because the, you know, three seats, three parking spaces isn't sufficient if all three are being taken up by employees. Yeah.
So maybe the measure is you, you had floor area.
Right.
For loading, so maybe the. If you, the bigger the restaurant, the more parking you have. Independent of how you serve the food, I, I, I don't, I really don't.
That doesn't, that doesn't necessarily indicate volume of, of traffic, right? So like. If you're just going in and, and, you know, you sell slices of pizza, like you said, you could have people in and out of there really quick. And so you have a high volume of traffic that would necessitate greater parking.
But people would turn, the spaces might turn every twenty minutes versus every three hours.
Well, for a pizza restaurant, I mean, it's for a one hundred percent takeaway restaurant, they could turn every uh, five minutes. But on the other hand, um, w- we could maybe have to think about the. Ratio of gross floor area, because the larger the kitchen, the more people you can serve takeout to. So, so gross floor area does make a difference. But on the other hand, if a restaurant has no seating, the more takeaway business they do, the more one has to figure that into one's. calculation for. Parking, although I will point out that we've also been reading articles lately about whether. Parking, although I will point out that we've also been reading articles lately about whether parking minimums should even be a thing. However, we should be fair.
Acton has a requirement of one space per hundred square feet of net floor area for fast food restaurant with. Seating but no table service or. Net floor areas, the total of all. Floor areas of a building, including basement and other stores, but not including stairways, elevators, restrooms. Common hallways and building service areas. So I I mean, I think there, I think there's enough information out there from other communities that. You know, you could, you could probably, you know, develop something and. And. Just change the exist, get rid of fast food. Um and makes, you know, fewer amendments. Because, you know, for a a a typical fast food restaurant, it. The this, this more significant issues that are created. It it are the drive-throughs. It. You know, there's no questions about that. Um and and then size. So. I, I think if you look at like the McDonald's and Acton. On two way, it doesn't have a drive-through. Um, you know, it's a fairly big. You know, a big McDonald's and at lunchtime, you know, they have quite a few cars and, you know. In the parking lot. I've never seen that parking lot. Full, because, you know, there are a lot of parking spaces. So, you know, maybe there is a way to. Find that. You know, if it is a restaurant with seating compared to, you know, a restaurant with, you know, with no seating. And a balance between that and the number of employees and square footage. And and I mean, you can throw them all in there and it's, you know, it's. You know, whatever, you know, whatever the requirement that has requires the the most parking. You know, could be the one that's applicable.
As long as we don't use parking, excuse me, number of employees is a proxy for amount of food that could be served, because. Robot food prep is coming.
True, I mean, it it depends on if if you're, you know, hand making everything is some fine dining establishment that. You know, people are doing rosettes over everything versus. Um, you know, if if you're just um. Opening up a can of. Soup and warming it up, you know, I suppose the number of employees is not necessarily indicative of. How many um?
Well, that's what just why gross floor area or gross for area cook kitchen would be a better metric, but. Whatever we do is gonna have to be a very rough.
Can we? I don't, I don't, I mean, you could make arguments either way for all of the different metrics, whether it's. It's a kitchen um size or or just the, whether there's seating or no seating. Because again, you could have, you know, the high end fine dining, which has, you know, set service times and tables. And parking is required for that. Or you have the place that has high turnover, so there's just a lot of flow, but that doesn't mean there is less. Total volume at any one given point in time, so. It it it, to me, whether there are tables or not tables, doesn't necessarily indicate. Uh, the the demand on on parking.
But on the other hand, it seems. We don't want people crashing into each other in parking lots for lack of room. And we don't want spillover parking illegally going into people's driveways. But other than that, isn't it the restaurant's business to say, I don't want to open there because there won't be enough parking for my clientele? Or I want to open there because I think there will be.
So um how's this? Because it's now five to five, I mean, five minutes to ten. Um, I will, um. I will take a a stab at at finding this middle ground. Um, I will also um go to Starbucks. See how many employees are there on the large issue in the morning? And how many seats they have and how many parking spaces they have? And um whatever we come up with will be more than what they have.
I swear, it seems like that parking lot, I don't even go there.
At least double.
Is shrinking, I don't know.
I don't want you to do that, Elizabeth, because I don't want you to get crashed into in a parking lot. It sounds fine to me.
And the loading zone, the loading zone being um Thoreau Street, yeah, that as well.
Well, so I um I do think, you know, loading zones are um are an issue. And and currently, you know, the current requirement is you don't need one if you're less than ten thousand square feet. Um can, that's, you know.
Is that something that unrelated to this? Is that something we could address at some point in terms of timing? So like. Starbucks, and I know that there are some, some places in uh in Concord Center, like they receive deliveries at particular times. Early, early in the morning or. Far later in the evening to avoid high traffic times, but that Starbucks, I I swear. Big deliveries at at peak traffic times.
Um, I, I'm, I am not going there. Um is the project goes through um site plan review or? Um, a special permit? So let's say like Cafe Nero had to get a special permit. Um, you. Then parameters can be made regarding, you know, deliveries. And. And so I I I. Do think that does need to be a consideration in this bylaw amendment. And and not, and not just because of fast food. Just because.
Yeah, I don't know it goes here. I just, I think.
So I'm just, you know, I'm just thinking about all the problems where you think about that and having an off-street, you know, loading requirement. Of none for a a building that's, you know, nine thousand square feet. If if the use. If the use needs a, you know, gets deliveries. They, they, they should have a loading area and. So I'm, you know, this could be a completely separate bylaw amendment now that I'm talking about it.
Well, that's what, yeah, that's what.
You know, maybe the requirement. Maybe that requirement should be. That zero to ten should be, you know, modified. Um, and. And then in, you can include a waiver provision. Somebody can go through and get a special permit. To waive the requirement for a loading dock. You know, or maybe it's a loading dock for. You know, specific uses or. And and this, maybe this isn't something that can happen for this year, but you know, now that you kind of think about all the problems that happen with, you know. These delivery truck, huge delivery trucks. Um, it's definitely something that um can be talked about further.
And. Since we're just. Floating those ideas, can you not make the requirement a a time-based requirement? So you either have a loading dock or you only take deliveries between certain hours? I I thought we already had something like, did we not? But can, so can you make that a part of it to to restrict?
I don't know if that gets into issue with commerce. Have to ask them.
All right. Anyway, okay, I think this is, yeah, I think this is a good. Spot. Oh, I was gonna ask in Elizabeth and what you're doing for this, you mentioned some of the other towns. Uh, and what they have, would you be able to just? Share some of what? Other like communities. Did I miss that? Where was that?
It was a packet, but I've got a couple more, so I'll send that off again.
It was a separate document, Nathan.
And. Oh, it was the first one attached. I I did not have that one open.
Can I just, um, can I ask, I don't know if I, I think I probably missed this in the past few months, but um. I think I heard that. Part. That this bylaw might also address um. I guess the reason why we don't have ever get food trucks in Concord, but did I mishear that or is this?
No, that's, that's, that's um, that's completely separate.
Oh, okay.
And I've been working with Linda on that, and so um, you know, hopefully we'll have something for the board to look at at the next meeting. Or, yeah, the eleventh. But that would be mobile food establishments.
This is, the short question is. Are we moving in the direction of allowing mobile food establishments?
Yes.
Are we?
All right, this is for another day. And it's already uh ten o'clock. Uh, are there any? Public questions or comments related to uh this fast food? Bylaw amendment. I'm not seeing any.
So I will see if I can make it, I will see if I can make it simpler.
I think. We will pick up, uh, does this work for, but if we sort of piecemeal the uh?
That just me or Nathan, the Nathan freeze?
It froze.
He froze.
Um, Elizabeth. Uh, and the examples from other towns, um, do we have like? I heard Acton, but um and I know I can open up the document and look at it, but um is it, is it a good like variety of kind of the more? You know, Arlington. Closer to the city versus. You know, sprawly. Generally not a great example of any sort of planning.
So we have uh um Chelsea, New Bedford, Canton, Acton, Westford. Fall River, Sudbury, Bedford, Waltham. Dartmouth and Austin, Texas.
Okay, so like Waltham is really the only one further east of us.
So you want me to look for something?
Yeah, I guess like, you know.
Or east of us.
Uh, closer to the city, I guess, more, which I generally view as like just more progressive when it comes to. Thinking about parking and whatever.
Well, if you want, I'll. A a lot of the communities that I looked at don't even differentiate between a fast food restaurant and a restaurant, they just have a restaurant. And it's based off seats and number of employees. Um, so, so wait, Mark, you can't leave yet.
I can do whatever I want to do, no?
No, because uh. Currently, you do not have a quorum of members.
When the chairman left without.
No, so, oh, he's back.
Well, he's back, okay.
Okay. Now we can end the meeting.
Muted, um Nathan. But Sue um also lost internet. We do know that there was some broadband update starting tonight at ten. Um, but it was more down towards Losbrook Road.
Oh.
I don't know why Nathan lost internet, but.
I I do have, uh, I do have town internet, which is. Almost always rock solid. I think in the six years I've had it, I've lost internet for maybe five minutes, two or three times, so. Very rare occurrence.
So I don't think, um, I don't think Sue is gonna be coming back.
Well.
So uh to answer um Haley's question was looking for other um. Progressive, more progressive communities when it comes to parking. Uh, and what I have found, a lot of communities don't differentiate between a restaurant. You know, sit-down restaurant, full service and fast food. They just have a requirement for restaurants. Um, so I will look at um like North Hampton. Which is pretty progressive on their regs and uh. And then some others east of us. Like I, I mean, I don't want to do a complete city like Cambridge or.
No, no, yeah. I don't know.
But, um, you know what, maybe, I don't know, like, uh Salem.
Andover.
Yeah, I'll try, you know, like North Andover. I'll look at a couple others. Okay.
Sue's back.
Yeah. Lastly, I know, so Mark has to, uh, Mark has to leave. Um, the only um direction I need. Quickly before you leave, Mark, is the direction the board um wants to move with the combined business residence. And the um, the Road Depot. Um, there have been comments on, you know. On on both of them and, um, so whether you want to make that. Um, your initial. Discussion for your meeting on. It would, it would have to be the twenty-seventh. Your agenda for the eleventh is very full.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. I I, when I got cut off, I was in the process of saying, asking if everybody likes sort of taking a uh. Yeah, this, this sort of piecemeal approach to uh the bylaw amendments or, yeah, uh amendments for town meeting. Um. So addressing, you know, addressing the fast food one today, we'll, we'll take on the other. Uh. The other ones for the twen- on the twenty, is it twenty-fifth or the twenty-seventh? Today's the twenty-seventh.
Um, so for October eleventh would be mobile food establishments.
Yeah.
The twenty-seventh would be the big ticket.
Twenty-fifth. Twenty-third.
Oh, twenty-fifth would be the bigger ticket. Um.
Yeah.
Okay, because then after that, um, it's, it's crunch time.
It's too much to, uh.
The warrant closes January sixth.
Yep. We'll get there.
Okay. We, we always do.
Yes.
All right.
All right, if there are no other, are there any general public comments? Hi, Linda.
Hi, still with you. Um, ca- congratulations on the um. Asabet River Bridge Project getting added to the ti- tip, that's great. Um, I think people were worn down from the previous conversation. You didn't get your due uh in terms of congratulations on that. Um, and I do have a question. Um, can someone tell me when Christopher Hyde's update got added to today's agenda?
Um, it got added um.
This morning?
First thing Monday morning, I got the request from. Um, Lee and.
Okay, that, that's.
I think over the weekend. Hang on, I can tell you.
So I must have printed mine out on the weekend prior to it coming in? It it it's not, that's. Not important, Elizabeth. It it just earlier than today. That's the main point.
I I show it as Monday morning.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. Okay. I'll try to remember to look, you know, I, there's so many meetings I'm going to, so I print them out early. And I didn't look just before. I will try to do that in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. All right, if there are no other general public comments. I think we can wrap up. This meeting of uh September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two. And we'll see everybody back here on October eleventh. All right, have a good night, everybody.